Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's City Council meeting. Information on how to watch, attend, and participate, as well as agendas, minutes, and recordings can be found on Broomfield's website at broomfield.org/councilmeetings. The public may also participate in public comment either in person or by calling 855-695-3744 and pressing *3 to be placed in the queue for comment. Screeners will ask callers for their first and last name and the neighborhood they live in and the item they would like to comment on. If you'd like to speak on more than one item on tonight's agenda, you'll need to press *3 each time to be placed back in the queue for comment. Public comment will be limited to 90 minutes total per item. The first 1 through 15 participants in the queue have three minutes to speak. The next 16 through 25 have two minutes. And if time remains, the next 26-plus participants have one minute to speak. For our hard-of-hearing residents present, we have wireless headsets available through our AB team in the back of the council chambers. The City Council regular meeting is called to order. No council members are absent. A quorum of the council is present. City and County Manager Hoffman is out sick this evening. As a result, we did not have the executive session that was scheduled tonight. We hope she gets well soon. Will everyone please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where wishes stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. In an effort to keep order for tonight's meeting, I ask council members to limit their comments to five minutes. If council members are given an opportunity to speak for a second time on an item, they should limit their comments to two minutes. We'll plan on a 10-minute break at around 8:00 p.m. We'll begin with council's review and approval of this evening's agenda. Council may add or remove items from the consent agenda, or council may revise the order of business for the meeting. Does any member of the council have any comments or questions regarding this evening's agenda? Mayor Protem Schaaf.
Thank you, Mayor. I would propose that we move Item 7C, the proposed resolution withdraw from the Rocky Flat Stewardship Council to the consent agenda.
All right, are there any objections to that being moved? Councilmember Henkel?
I object.
Okay, so it will stay on the business agenda. Any other revisions, recommendations? All right, seeing none, the agenda is approved. The first item under petitions and communications this evening is a proclamation declaring September 2024 as Workforce Development Month. Will the staff representatives here to accept the proclamation, please come and meet Mayor Protem Schaaf at the podium? And thank you all for joining us this evening. I see the whole crew's here. I'll summarize the proclamation and then I'll turn it over to the representatives for comments. This proclamation recognizes that the world of work is rapidly evolving and developing Broomfield's workforce is vital to its economy and future prosperity. Education and upskilling are critical for preparing residents for the future of work, and we must ensure that all Broomfielders have access to opportunities for high-quality lifelong education that is connected to in-demand and growing career paths. The Broomfield Workforce Center provides free workforce programs to support both job seekers and businesses with dedicated workforce professionals in partnership with many organizations throughout the community working to address future employment challenges. Therefore, as mayor, I hereby declare and proclaim September 2024 as Workforce Development Month in Broomfield and invite all residents to use this month to recognize the contributions of workforce professionals and participate in events and initiatives that support our job seekers and employers in the community. So, thank you very much for all that you do. Would you like to make any comments?
Mayor, Mayor Protem, city council members, on behalf of the Broomfield Workforce Center, thank you so much for this proclamation. I actually mean my thoughts. Not going to last long without them. Today, I am proud to represent the Broomfield Workforce Center and the vital services we provide to the citizens of Broomfield and surrounding areas. While many of us enjoy the benefits of having a job, getting a paycheck to cover our bills and hopefully a little bit more, and feeling accomplished and valued, not everyone is as fortunate. Many people lose their jobs due to layoffs or company closures. They may face health challenges that hinder their ability to work, or they've been out of the workforce for various reasons, whether it's raising children, navigating language barriers, or seeking their first job after school. The Broomfield Workforce Center and our statewide system of Colorado Workforce Centers is here for those moments when people need help getting back to work. Starting a new career or finding a job that fits their needs. So, sorry. We're just very passionate about what we do. We are always here to support our community's employment and training needs, but especially during Workforce Development Month. Last month, one of our team members received an email from a gentleman he helped two years ago. I want to thank you for your help and support when I lost my job in 2022 and my world came crashing down around me. I am still at that job you helped me find, and I love it. Thank you for being there for me when I needed you. Our workforce specialists assist job seekers with resumes, interviewing skills, and career readiness, while our business services team helps employers post job openings and connect businesses with qualified and talented candidates and many other resources. Over the last 12 months, we helped over 13,000 individuals either through our website and/or our office visits. Our theme for Workforce Development Month for 2024 is People, Professions, and Possibilities. And we also have weekly themes. Week one, we are celebrating our partners, recognizing the value of community partnerships. Week two, finding your purpose, understanding the importance that well-being plays in success. Week three, unlocking your potential, encouraging big dreams. And week four is creating your own pathways. Learn more about the opportunities and resources available at the Broomfield Workforce Center and in the community. In closing, I am so honored to work with this dedicated team of professionals that stand here with me and help Broomfield residents find meaningful careers. The Broomfield Workforce Center thrives because our workforce specialists empower clients with the skills they need to succeed in their employment journey. I'll leave a calendar of events for Workforce Development Month at the back of the room and invite you to attend any events that you may find interesting. We have several workshops, both virtual and in-person. And for the first time, we are participating in a metro-area career fair with Denver, Adams, Arapahoe, Douglas, and Jefferson Counties, all holding a career fair on the same day at different times throughout the day. If a job seeker was really motivated, they could attend five career fairs all in the same day. Thank you again for all of your support throughout the year, but particularly as we celebrate Workforce Development Month. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Harden, and thank you for the team. You guys are like this really tight family, I can tell. And that comes through in your work and how you treat folks that come to visit your services. So, there is a public comment opportunity on this item. If anyone would like to make any comments on Workforce Development Month? Would anyone else in the crew like to make any remarks? Or you're here for support always? Or go to council questions or comments? Any members of council have any comments? Councilmember Lim?
I'd like to thank the whole team for coming this evening. Those of us on the board had the privilege of seeing you twice in one day now, so that's great. Board President Strandberg is in the back also, so I'd like to recognize the efforts of the board in this work. I would say that the team was very proud to show us the numbers this morning at the board. They presented their metrics for, as the program year just closed, and they had a lot to be pleased with, and we appreciate their work for Broomfield. Thank you.
Thank you, and my apologies, councilmember, when I forgot we're using the button.
No worries, Mayor. I just want to say thank you so much for the work you do. I actually am, I've received some similar workforce development when I was in high school. And for a lot of youth and young people, this is, you know, their first opportunity to get resume helping and building. So, the fact that y'all, you know, give that information, the stats for the youth and young people is very phenomenal. I just want to say thank you so much for all the work you do and keep it up, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Leslie? No? Okay, you just hit the button by accident, all right. Any other councilmember comments? All right, I don't see any. Well, thank you guys for coming down and thank you again for making us so proud of the hard work that you do to help folks find work and help our employers. Thank you. The next item under petitions and communications this evening is a proclamation declaring August 31st, 2024, as International Overdose Awareness Day. Will the staff representatives here to accept the proclamation, please come to the podium and meet Mayor Protem Schaaf? And thank you all for joining us. I see our Youth for Youth Coalition is in attendance as well. Bravo. I will summarize the proclamation and then I'll turn it over to the representatives for comments. This proclamation recognizes that protecting the health and safety of residents in Broomfield is our highest responsibility. Collaboration among elected officials, law enforcement, local government, and residents play a key role in ensuring safety. Overdose prevention has been identified as a significant public health issue by various organizations, including the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment. And in 2023, Colorado saw 1,865 drug overdose deaths, with 10 occurring in Broomfield, along with 139 hospital encounters related to overdose. Additionally, 6.5% of high school students in Broomfield and Boulder Counties reported using prescription pain medications without a doctor's prescription. Broomfield Public Health and Environment, along with key stakeholders, are actively working to mitigate the impact of substance use through initiatives such as the B Corp Mental Health Coresponder Program, the Communities That Care Coalition, and the Opioids Regional Council. Therefore, as mayor, I hereby declare and proclaim August 31st, 2024, as International Overdose Awareness Day in Broomfield. So, thank you all for being here. Would you like to provide any comments?
Yes, thank you so much. My name is Kelsey Moore, and I work with our Public Health Department, and I work on our Behavioral Health, which encompasses our mental health and substance use strategies. So, thank you again for recognizing August 31st as Overdose Awareness Day in Broomfield. You've done it the past few years, and we really appreciate this recognition that we receive. I'm here today with our Youth Advisory Council with our Public Health Department. They're called Youth for Youth, and they're going to tell you about our overdose prevention efforts that are occurring in Broomfield. The state of Colorado, as you can see this number, the deaths due to overdose has continued to rise in recent years, starting from 2019 and continuing on. We've seen an increase in overdose deaths at the state level, while Broomfield has seen a recent decline in drug overdose-related deaths. We want to recognize all the work that's being done in Broomfield to save lives from this preventable cause of death. So, I'd like to invite our three Youth for Youth advisors to come up and tell you why this topic is important to them and to their peers and what they have been doing about it in Broomfield.
Thank you.
Hello, council. My name is Kiana Wagaman, and I go to Legacy High School, and I'm a part of the Youth for Youth program. So, for those of you who don't know, Youth for Youth is a group that works towards youth substance use prevention. And because we work on substance use prevention, one of the things that we have focused on in past summer projects is opioid use. So, fortunately, we found that most youth aren't using opioids. And actually, according to the recent data of high school students in our area, the misuse of prescription medications is decreasing, which is really good. However, fentanyl and overdose are a continued concern because of the rise in contamination and changing attitudes about pills.
Hi, I'm Rachel. I go to Broomfield High School. I'm also a member of the Youth Coalition. And I want to talk about a little bit about what we have been doing to prevent and reduce opioid overdose-related deaths and teens using opioids. So, we are all trained to provide Narcan training, which, if you don't know, Narcan is naloxone, and it is like a temporary stopper of opioid overdoses. And we are trained to provide trainings as well. So, we have hosted several trainings over the last year to train parents and teens on how to use Narcan if they ever find somebody that is experiencing an overdose. And we've provided that to the teen council, and we are hoping to continue to educate a message about those Narcan trainings, and we have a few coming up as well.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Rohitas, and I go to Nauwat High School. So, this summer, our main focus was alcohol and vaping. But we still focused on and educated the Broomfield community about Narcan and opioid use. So, we did, for example, we did, like, we tabled at the Summer Concert Series and other community events in Broomfield in order to inform the community about Youth for Youth and Narcan use.
Thank you.
I'm Surbi, and I go to Legacy High School. And another event we did this summer was an open house event at the end of the summer, which we held at the Broomfield Library. And it was open to pretty much anyone. They could come in and learn about Y for Y as a group and also what we were doing throughout the summer. So, we did have a table that was focused on Narcan and opioid overdose. So, we had some of our experts in Y for Y were at the table, and they were telling people some statistics and just about what's happening in our community with opioid use. And then they were also distributing Narcan for free and showing people how to use it so more people could have access to it.
Thank you.
And I am Hunter Hobbs, and I go to Jefferson Academy. And as youth who strive to make a difference in our Broomfield community, we want to make sure that the overdosing numbers will decrease and spreading the awareness of Narcan's capabilities to make that better. And we host, we host events teaching students and parents alike how to use Narcan. And we have one on September 9th, I believe, at the Broomfield Library to teach students and parents alike how to use Narcan.
Thank you.
Thank you for our Youth for Youth and all the efforts that they're doing in Broomfield to prevent opioid overdose. There's so many different people who are a part of this effort, not just our Public Health Department. As you can see, our Police Department, our Human Services Department, our Detention Center, our library, and our municipal courts, North Metro Fire, our Broomfield Behavioral Health Coalition. So, it really is a group effort, a team effort, to combat opioid overdose in our county and our city. So, our ask of you is if you would like to join our event we have this Friday. We're going to be recognizing overdose in our community in this day. And we're having a memorial event on Friday, August 30th, so this coming Friday at 9:00 a.m. It's going to be at the pond outside of the Broomfield Library. And we're going to hear stories from those who've been impacted by overdose in their lives. And we're going to do a memorial walk around the pond to memorialize all of those who have passed in Broomfield due to overdose. Narcan will also be available to take with you, and we'll have refreshments as well, too. So, all are welcome to join us for that event. I gave you all flyers here, so feel free to take those with you as well. And just to conclude, the theme of the International Day of Overdose Recognition is Together We Can, which highlights the power of our community when we all stand together. So, please join us on Friday. Learn more at our website, broomfield.org/overdoseprevention. We'd be happy to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you all so much. Yes, let's clap for them. It's so wonderful to have youth advocates out in the community, talking to your peers. And we're so lucky to have you provide those services. We do allow public comment. If anyone would like to comment on this item, you'll have an opportunity. How about council? Anybody on council have any questions or comments for the crew? Well, thanks for the invitation to the event. I just moved right on. Councilmember Winn?
No worries, Mayor. Thank you so much. You know, I just want to say it is inspiring and gives me a lot of joy and hope to see y'all here. I can't imagine, you know, being in high school, school just started, and y'all want to spend your Tuesday evening with us. But I do want to say it's very, it motivates me and gives me lots of hope for our community because, you know, overdosing, teen substance use is on the rise, and y'all are a reflection of how we could stop this and make sure that we could bring positive change to our community. So, thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Cohen? Oh, after, we'll get back to you. Go ahead.
All right, I'll be, I just wanted to ask, following up on Councilmember Winn's good comments, but I was just curious, in terms of Narcan, do our schools have dispensaries for Narcan in the schools? I know colleges are putting in vending machines, so it's easily accessible as there's limited time span to use it.
Hi, council. I am Laura Paulson. I work for Public Health and Environment. So, there was a recent legislation passed at the state level to allow schools to allow students to carry Narcan. But that's kind of up to the individual school districts how they're going to be implementing that. It is still considered a medication. So, technically, students aren't supposed to have it with them on campus the same way they can't have Tylenol or other medications. But there is a lot of education happening. It's part of the health curriculum, I think, in most of our schools. And there is an increasing awareness. They're also really great partners at sharing out our events and our distribution sites, so.
The schools do not stock Narcan?
They have it for emergency use only, and they have response teams within the schools who are able to provide that. And I think a lot of administration and bus drivers and things like that throughout districts are also trained, but they're not distributing.
Okay, that's interesting. Narcan, you can't get high on it. It's one purpose, so.
It is completely safe, yes.
Thank you much.
Yeah.
Thank you. So, we did have public comment before this, but if you wanted to speak on this item, I'll go ahead and let you comment as the public.
I wanted to say I really commend you guys for doing this. I wish that there had been something like that when my nieces and nephews and my two daughters were in high school. They all had friends that passed away, several of them during COVID, and because they couldn't deal with the lockdowns and others just for different reasons. But it could have saved a lot of lives, and they lost, I would guess, probably a dozen friends, all of them. And you guys can save a whole lot more with this program. And I am very impressed by all of you for how you are so eloquent and so passionate and speak so passionately about this program. And that's got to inspire a lot of people, so.
Thank you. And thank you, guys, really. It's an honor to have this program and to have you guys participate. So, keep up the great work, and it is encouraging to hear that some of those numbers are going in the right direction, which is down. Thanks again, y'all. We'll see you Friday. So, next, we're moving on to councilmember reports. Does any member of council have any reports or updates this evening? Mayor Protem Schaaf?
Thank you, Mayor. So, just wanted to let everybody know, I went to the 8th Annual Sustainable Transportation Summit today that was put on by Community Solutions. It was up in Longmont. There was a great presentation by Sound Transit, which is the transit agency in Washington in the Seattle-Tacoma area. They talked a lot about some of the similar conversations that we're having here in Colorado about the cost of that system to operate, the deferred maintenance that goes along with that, building a new system and not having that operation and maintenance money down the road to cover that system, the grants that support that system, and then also the housing and land use conversations that go along with that transit and transportation. So, great presentation there. Governor Polis, Director Shoshana Lou talked about some of the legislation that was passed geared towards transit advancement. And then there was a good panel discussion about the advancements of the Front Range Passenger Rail. Kind of the consensus around that was needing to build, continue to build trust around the issue of transit within Colorado, but especially within the RTD district. And that is really going to come to, you know, to, that's going to have to be built quickly because they're planning on running a ballot measure in 2026 that would look at sales tax to, I think it's about 25 cents or so on every dollar or on every $10 in sales tax. And so, looking to build that trust and wanting to make sure that that is supported in 2026. And then they talked about communication as well and providing the information why this system is needed, what this is going to cost, building the operations and maintenance budget as well for the long-term health of that system. So, a lot of good information came about. And then they will be working on a written report that will be due to the Legislative Transportation Committee, I believe in some type in September, but I think by the end of September, and then a much more robust report that will be due in January of 2025. So, a lot of work on the transit front and great, great presentation. Community Solutions, you know, did another great event. So, thank you, Mayor.
Well, thank you for the update. Any other councilmember updates, reports, events? We'll move on. We'll now continue with regular public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to comment on items other than those listed on the agenda. So, if anyone would like to be heard, please make your way to the podium, state your name and neighborhood for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes, please.
Short people here. I'm Sandy Anderson from the Broadlands, Mayor, Mayor Protem, councilmembers, and city leadership staff. I'd just like to thank you for all that you do as it is well beyond what is understood, acknowledged, and you all deserve our respect and support. Mine is a simple message tonight, and I speak at the same time every time. We count on you to have the vision, competency, and acumen to continue Broomfield's progress in the dual roles of representing us as a city and a county. In closing to all of our electeds, let me remind you that you were voted in. You won your elections, and you are who we choose to represent us. You have our trust, you have our support, and you have our vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Karen Benker, and I'm from Longmont. I am running for RTD, and I appear to be the only person that's going to be on the November 5th ballot. So, I figured it'd be a good time to come down and say hi and introduce myself. I am running for two reasons. One is, I don't know about Broomfield, but up in Longmont, we've been waiting for rail for a very long time, and we're getting very impatient. And so, our mayor up in Longmont asked me to run, and I'd like to work together with your council and your mayor to see if we can kickstart this program and get it going. The second reason that I'm running is because there's been a lot of bus service that has been cut. And I think it's time, RTD has got a very large reserve right now. And I think it's time that they start putting in additional service and start trying to increase ridership numbers. My background, just real quick, I was the Budget Director for the Colorado Department of Labor and Employment. In fact, what was nice to hear tonight was your workforce. I was also a workforce director out on the eastern plains. I served on RTD, by the way, for eight years from Lakewood back in, you're going to know how old I am now, from '92 to 2000. And so, I know the agency very well. There's no doubt I have a lot to learn. And one of the reasons I'm here tonight is simply to say hello. And if we can, if you have an interest in sitting down and teaching me some of the things that you would like to see from RTD, I very much like to be able to learn as much as I can so I know what your needs are and hit the ground running. So, thank you. And if there's anything I can do for you, just let me know.
Thank you so much. Thanks for coming down and for running. Thank you so much. Thanks for coming down and for running.
Good evening. My name is Larry Bangs. I reside in Ward 5, where I am ably represented by my good friend Heidi Hingle. I represent a consortium of faith communities in Broomfield who have been meeting together for close to a year now. We chose to come together so we could maximize our impact as opposed to just what we could do as individual churches or parishes. We chose to concentrate on affordable housing, and we are supporting the Broomfield Housing Solutions Forum. And I'm here to say thank you. In the last few weeks, the council has provided critical money for one affordable housing project that's going to allow it to start digging ground and actually building within the next few months. You also approved a zoning change that will allow another affordable housing project to get off the boards. And I understand a couple of weeks ago, you had a special fund and you allocated monies from that fund to critical needs with Broomfield Fish and the Refuge and other folks who are who are doing this vital work with affordable housing and taking care of our neighbors who are unhoused. So I'm here to say thank you. You're doing a great job and just hope that you will continue to. So I'm sure you will continue to support that. I want to tell one anecdote, maybe as much for folks here as it is for you, because I think you know this stuff. Heidi and I have worked together with the refugee community for many, many, many months. We have a young lady from Ukraine who is supporting her teenage daughter and her grandmother. She has an apartment. It is not an affordable apartment. She's got a good job, but she has to spend 70% of her income for housing needs. Not too long ago, she had a breakdown with her car, wouldn't pay her rent. Fortunately, there was some temporary assistance available for her to at least get her through the crisis, but it's just not sustainable. And there are so many of our friends and neighbors throughout the community who are in a similar situation. By contrast, there's a couple that we were able to get into an affordable housing situation, a couple from Afghanistan. The husband went to work and supported his wife to become a dental assistant. And now she's supporting him so he can get a degree in cybersecurity. They are contributing members of the community instead of drawing resources from the community, and it's all made possible by affordable housing.
Thank you very much.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Janet Sund, Ward 5. I would like to piggyback on that gentleman's comments. It's not what I was going to talk about. But it does have something to do with myself and other people that I know of. And my first, my first comment is, when he said these refugees, I don't mind people coming in here from other countries, as long as they're legal. And I would like to understand why refugees get more assistance than people that live here, have lived here all of their lives with housing, with all kinds of things. I live at 20% AMI because of my brain injuries. I would like to get back to work. I have job offers all the time for 120, 140,000, and I just can't accept them. So myself, he said that, I forget the percentage, he said that their housing was costing them. Well, my housing cost, I own my own home. I have a very low mortgage rate. I've been in it since 1998. And I plan to keep it. I have two daughters in college. I want to make sure I have a place for them to come if they need to. And I have no intention of leaving Broomfield. And my, my housing cost, even though it's very low, because of the increase, I got $300 added to my taxes this last time when they increased the taxes, the property valuations. And that has put me over my budget. I have, I'm spending $1,300 out of $2,000 just for my house payment. That doesn't leave any money for utilities or food. I have no health insurance. So I'd like to understand how these refugees come in and get all these services. I don't think that's right. It just doesn't sit well with me. And I was going to talk about something else tonight, but part of what I came up with was 18% of our community has a household income below $50,000, or yeah, $50,000. 24% is 50,000 to 100,000. And households are, the average is 2.4. So I don't think $100,000 is all that much from my standpoint, having.
103 minutes has expired, so maybe you need to come back again with the rest.
I will. That was what I wanted to talk about. But it makes a point.
Right. Thank you. Next.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem and Council. John Ewald Pinnacle North. Will the Universal Waste-Hauling Contract be made public at any point? And specifically, will it be made public before the 10th? I have a lot of questions about the contractor, about the program, that the generic website just doesn't answer. Like, what happens if the vendor decides to back out? Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll get staff to Ms. Rogers. Yes, that's affirmative. All right. Anybody else who would like to?
Just because there's others that might be wondering. It is posted on the website, John. I'll email you the link. But it was added, the actual contract is now linked to that Universal Waste-Hauler page. Okay. But I'll email you the link anyway.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers. Would anyone else like to be heard? All right. Well, then we're going to move on. Next, under Reports, is the Performance and Internal Audit Semiannual Update. Council has a copy of the Agenda Memorandum, which I'll ask our staff to begin the discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protem. City Council, Bernie Block, Director of Internal Audit, will introduce this item. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem. City Council members, Bernie Block, the Director of Performance and Internal Audit, here to provide you with an updated, the activities that I've been working on since February 2024, since we last met. Back in December 2023, did an organizational RICS assessment and prepared a list of potential projects and ranked those with input from the City and County Manager's Office, City and County Attorney, and from that, developed the 2024 Annual Project Plan, which is attachment number one in your packet. For the audits, performance audits that I've worked on, the, oh, so, sorry. Also in your packet is attachment number two, which is the Performance and Internal Audit Status Updates Listing, provides a summary of all performance audits, findings, recommendations, and the status of issued audits with open or recently implemented items. So for the performance audits that I've worked on since we last met, the American with Disabilities Act audit was issued in April 24. The 2024 Revenue Payment Processing Audit is currently in the review phase. And the Fleet Services or Fleet Management Audit is currently in progress. There have been no special projects or reviews for the Business Process Improvement Projects, the Library Arts, History and CSU Extension Agreements. Project was completed in March of 2024. I continue to provide consultation to management on a variety of topics, including the Enterprise Resource Planning System, procurement and implementation, the Grants Administration and external audit-related matters, to name a few. I continue to partner with Diversity, Equity and Organizational Development Department to deliver process improvement and change management training. We hope to deliver four training classes during 2024. And with that summary, I'd like to welcome any questions you have about any of the activities I've been working on.
Thank you very much, Mr. Block. We will go to public comments first. If someone would like to be heard on this item, please come up to the podium. Don't see anyone online, so we'll go to questions from council next. Any questions from City Council? Councilmember Lim?
That's weird. The system has a tie. We both rang in at the same time.
You found a little glitch. You can have a tie.
It happens occasionally. We're tied when we ring in. I had two questions. Thank you. You mentioned that you're involved in the ERP, the Enterprise Resource Planning System. Could, could you give just a brief summary of how that will improve the overall ability of, of access to records and improve the processes throughout the organization?
Sure. I'll do my best. Thank you for that question, Councilmember Lim. Currently, we're working with a system that is roughly 20 years old. It's antiquated in some senses. Some modules don't talk very well with the others. So we have a lot of workarounds throughout the organization to get the work done that we need to have done. So I think what we're trying to do organizationally is consciously make sure that we plan for a system that helps integrate this data so we can leverage the information for management decision-making purposes, also to improve efficiencies across the board and hopefully improve internal controls as well.
Does, will this system be used in the enterprise funds records also?
It will be used to account for all the organization.
All of the organization. Okay. Thank you. Then you are involved in the developing the grants policy.
I'm constantly, I'm available for consultation. So we have a new grants administrator. She's been here about eight or nine months. She's been doing a wonderful job. We organizationally have not had a grants policy historically. And so it's hard to standardize your practices when you don't have, you know, a policy to point to. So that's been in draft form and moving forward. And there's finance department soliciting feedback from not only myself, but other members of, you know, the grant community in the organization with hopes of issuing that policy sometime in the late summer or fall, I believe.
Okay. We were noting last week when we were looking at the data for the CIP projects and that, that, and it listed the grants, that the grants are concentrated almost exclusively in transportation. So I looked at this development of the grants policy as possibly providing a way that departments who are responsible for their own grants kind of initiation for investigation would possibly have an easier time seeking grants if there's another, if there's actually a company, organization-wide policy. Is that the case, that it should be easier for those departments to apply?
I believe the grants administrator would act as a resource for those departments. You know, it is just one individual. And getting the formal structure in place, I believe, is their priority at the time. But to make departments aware of listings where there are possible grants when it comes to their attention and also to help them through the proposal process with questions, providing the documentation that's needed. I think as this role matures in the organization, there will be more time to spend on pre-award activities. But I do think the major focus is on post-award at the moment.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Those are my questions. Thank you, Councilmember Marsh Holson.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two general questions. Thank you for the presentation and the documents. Two general questions, and then I actually have a follow-up question to one of Councilmember Lynn's questions. My two questions, I want to make sure I'm understanding and reading this document right. The document number, attachment two, where the list of all the outstanding. Am I reading it correctly that 18 of the 67 lines were issues that have been identified over five years ago, 2019 and prior, that are still outstanding?
Thank you for your question, Councilmember Marsh Holson. I can't tell you the exact number right off the top of my head, but there are a few items out there that have been there for a while. I think some of the recommendations require more resources than others. And so some of these recommendations, I keep them open as kind of a reminder. So we don't lose sight of that. But it's just figuring out when to best address it.
I appreciate that. Thank you. And then a question that a resident raised with me, and actually my question too. Can you tell me the last time that the operations of the enterprise funds, the water sewer, wastewater departments, when those departments were subjected to a full internal audit of their operations?
I have not specifically looked at the enterprise funds as a fund for an audit. I have touched on different parts of what would be involved with the enterprise funds, such as the need for an asset management system, the need to appropriately budget for our assets and maintain our assets. But specifically on the enterprise fund, I have not. But again, I welcome feedback and suggestions for projects all the time.
Thank you. And then with the follow-up question I had, you mentioned the grant policy being completed sometime this year. Do you have an idea of when that would come before council for approval?
I'm not sure exactly how that process works. Maybe City and County Attorney couldn't.
Mayor, if I may, it's not a policy document, or it's guiding our internal policy, but it's not a policy document that the City Council would need to review. We'd be happy to provide an update to you as the council, as it moves through their process. But it is not a document that requires council approval. It's more guiding to the internal processes for the administration, as was mentioned, for our internal processes.
Okay. I have follow-up thoughts on that, but that's for a different discussion. So, thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Mayor Protem Schaaf?
Thank you for your reports. I always appreciate you coming before council. So one of the things that came out of our annual financial audit was a finding around grants. This is something that has been repeated in previous grants. I know that we continue to work towards this. But how quickly can we expect to mitigate this and to continue to that improvement so that we don't see this on future financial audits?
I believe, thank you for your question, Mayor Protem Schaaf. I believe the item you're referring to is related to the schedule of expenditures of federal awards. And we are working as an organization to make sure that we have documented processes in place for that, checks and balances involving more individuals in that process. While finance is taking the lead, they have asked me for my input, and I have been involved at that as well.
All right. I look forward to hopefully moving that along and not seeing that in the future.
As do we.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council member questions, comments, feedback? All right. Well, thank you so much for the update, Mr. Block. Next, under Reports, is Review and Request for Direction Related to Event Center Demolition and Deconstruction After Options. Council has a copy of the Agenda Memorandum, which I'll ask our staff to summarize.
Thank you, Mayor. Katie Allen, co-director for Community Development, will summarize this item.
Good evening. Thank you, Ms. Burton Zetti. Katie Allen, co-director of Community Development. I am here tonight with Jeff Romine. I will provide a brief presentation related to the demolition options for the Broomfield Event Center, and Jeff will follow up with an update of the RFP for the future redevelopment of the site. We were last here at the end of March, providing a scheduled update to council regarding the event center demolition. At that time, we were about a third of the way through our contractor selection process, which was a two-step request for qualifications and a request for proposal process. Since that time, we completed. Since that time, we completed the contractor selection process, and we entered into an agreement with Colorado Cleanup Corporation in early June to start pre-demolition services. Colorado Cleanup has 34 years of experience with site work and building demolition in the metro area. And they recently completed the Boulder Community Hospital exterior building demolition. Since June, we've been working with Colorado Cleanup to develop demolition and/or deconstruction options. And I'm going to present those to you tonight, along with staff's recommendation. Next slide, please. Okay. Okay, so we are presenting three options. The first one, we are calling green demolition with recycling. And essentially, what that is, first, we are going to sell or auction all of the internal equipment, fixtures, furnishings, furniture in accordance with Borough's disposition of surplus property, the policy for that. And some of that has actually already happened. Our attorney's office has been working with the city and county of Denver to sell certain elements of equipment in the building. The building would be demolished, and steel in particular will be separated and hauled off to be recycled. The building masonry, concrete on the site, asphalt, items such as that would be crushed and recycled or used as, on the site for subgrade stabilization. This green demolition process, which I did a very quick and high-level overview, we estimate the landfill diversion rate at 90%. The steel, which is of note in the other two, two options, like I said, would be sorted and then removed for the site for recycling. Our rough order of magnitude cost for this option is $3,325,000, and it would take approximately six months to do that. Yeah, so that's our first option. The second option, we're calling deconstruction. The first step is the same. We would auction or sell the fixtures, furniture, and equip, furnishings, furniture and equipment, excuse me. The the steel would be carefully removed from the building. And could you actually go to the next slide for a visual? So this would include all of the structural steel, in particular, those large trusses that you can see in the isometric cutaway drawing there over the arena, which is the majority of the steel in the building. Those would be those would be carefully removed, and that's a pretty complex operation. It would require highly skilled iron workers. And it would probably require that those trusses, once they're cut from the structure, are restabilized, reshored, to get those down safely. So this is a, a complicated and difficult process to get these trusses down whole for potential reuse. In addition, the other structural steel in the building would also be deconstruction, deconstructed for reuse potentially in another building. That would set aside 2,900 tons of steel. So that would have to be preserved clean, catalogued and stored somewhere for somebody to reuse it. It would add about $3.7 million to the total. If you could go back to the previous slide, that total would be $7,350,000, that rough order of magnitude. And it would add about six months to the project, so that would take about a year for that option. The third option presented is what we're calling a hybrid. Same as the first two, we would auction, sell the internal fixtures, furniture and equipment. The concrete, masonry and asphalt would be recycled and crushed for, either recycled off-site or used to stabilize and subgrade. The diversion rate, again, is 90%, and that's true for all three of these options because the same materials are being diverted from the landfill in all three options. But really, the difference is what is happening with the structural steel. In this hybrid option, and I'm sorry, I'm going to make you switch to the next slide again for a visual. We would not save the long span, large trusses over the arena for reuse. Those would be demolished with the building sorted and then recycled as steel. The lower level steel framing shown in red on the plan view and, and where the arrows pointing in the isometric would be set aside. That's about 100 tons of steel versus 2,900 tons. So that's about 3.4% of the steel and 0.34% of the overall project by weight. This option would add 440,000-ish to the project cost and would add about one or two months. And I know that council was interested in what Boulder had done with our community hospital. I would say that their project was probably most similar to our hybrid option. They also auctioned fixtures, furniture and equipment. In that, in that case, they set aside 161 tons of steel, which is about 14% of their building's steel for free, for future reuse in other projects. They did have a project to use some of the steel. It was their fire station number three. They do still have steel set aside, I believe, on the site, and they are selling that steel. I think for $1 per transaction for non-city projects. So Boulder's objectives were very much to maximize reuse of building materials to the extent possible. It was, cost was not their highest priority with that project. And, and that's what they, they told us when we met with them, that they were really trying to see how much of the building they could reuse, frankly. Next slide. So with that, staff's recommendation is option one, green demolition with recycling. And the reason behind that is it's the lowest cost, it's the shortest schedule. It achieves the same landfill diversion rate, with the difference being the ability to reuse versus recycling the steel. And the reason why we see reusing the steel as a challenge is we don't have a project or an identified user for that steel, particularly those trusses. I mean, it would have to be another arena essentially to use such, something that massive. And then Broomfield would need to, you know, we would have to pay extra for the careful deconstruction, but then we would need to protect and store the steel, not just the trusses, but all the steel, and hope that someone can take it, take it from us or buy it from us. We would also lose the scrap value of the steel. I'm not sure, you know, how much of a priority that is. But, so that is staff's recommendation. Next slide, I'm going to switch gears just a little bit. Talk a little bit about the demolition process and how it would occur. Generally speaking, the project would move west to east, so US 36 side towards Broomfield Lane side, starting with the southeast corner shown in red. Then I'm going to flip through some slides, isometric, just to show you the, how it goes down. So you can just keep rolling through these about every second if you want. So it starts in the southeast corner. You can see there, that's, that would get removed, next slide. And that's south middle section, northeast. Trusses come down the arena. And the last section is the west side along Broomfield Lane. The truck riding plan would access off of State Highway 121. It would use Uptown Avenue to Parkland, both directions in and out of the project site. And next slide. Sorry, you have to turn your head 90 degrees for this slide, but, so Parkland is on the left side of the page. Broomfield Lane is on the top. So the red perimeter, it would be the demolition perimeter. I know there's been some questions if the parking lot to the north would be demolished. It is not going to be. It's outside of that demolition limits. Also, the plaza area due south of that parking lot, not in front of the building, will, is not going to be demolition. There's some artwork there, there's some lights, some trees. The building itself and the parking lots are in the demolition perimeter. Next slide. So the next steps, depending on council's direction. If we, if we were to proceed with option one, the green demolition with recycling, we would auction the remaining fixtures, furniture and equipment. The contractor is working with roller auctions. They're the same auction company that City and County Broomfield uses. So we are trying to coordinate a meeting with Arista Businesses and Residents. We have that tentatively on the calendar for October 3rd. We have to work out the details. And probably our tightest schedule is trying to get a guaranteed maximum price contract for the demolition to you on September 24th. Might have to break a few rules to get it on that soon, but that's what I'm shooting for. And then the project would begin in October or November, depending on how long it takes to get our utilities disconnects, disconnected and permits. Then I'm going to turn it over to Jeff, but I will be here to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Allen.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of council, members of the Borough Board. I'm Jeff Romine, I'm the Director of Economic Vitality. Next slide, please. As you know from various briefings, both in March and then previously, there are two sites that are related to this development or this site and the former event center. The first is roughly 10 acres, slightly larger, about 10.2 acres, which is where the event center currently is. And, and you will note that it is within the Wadsworth Junction URA, which expires in 2030. It is also within the Arista Metro District. We began doing due diligence on this site within both of them as we began talking about this. And then we accelerated it with a contract with Major Design Group, who helped us work through some of the due diligence. We then prepared, we're preparing a request for proposals for this site, and we're planning on issuing it early in the fall with responses due approximately Thanksgiving. The goal of it is to have the RFP include the outcome criteria as well as the scale mix and timing of the development. So obviously, we wanted to give you this quick snapshot to provide you with that background to understand what happens after the demolition. Our goal would be then to be able to negotiate with that proposed developments or developers and move forward with that in a timely manner that would follow closely after the full demolition. So with the assurance of a demolition, we've now started to hear interest in the site. Next slide, please. The second site is further to the southwest, is noted. It's 12.5 acres. That property is currently owned by the City and County of Broomfield, whereas the event center, as you know, as well as the event center land is owned by Borough. So this is owned separately by the city and county. That was formerly set up as overflow parking. It is also located within the Wadsworth Junction URA, but it is not located within the metropolitan district. The development there, as we talked about, we can, we started that, due diligence on that property also. As we shared with council previously, we did do an RFI to see if there was interest in moving forward since that site was clean already and adjacent to roads. We thought that that might be something that could rapidly generate interest from the development community. We did receive four positive responses. And one of them, in, in our conversations with them explicitly said, "We're interested in this site, but quite frankly, we want to know what's going to happen to parcel A, that first parcel, because that will determine an awful lot about what we might do here." So they, they also then expressed they'd be interested in parcel A over parcel B or doing both. And so we began to rethink that. Another positive response that we got from that was somebody who's actually looking at another location within Broomfield. So they were interested in that parcel, but they began and continued their exploration in Broomfield and are moving forward with identifying a site in Broomfield for what they wanted to do. So it was a very positive experience. However, in that learning and in the follow-up conversations, both with those developers and just understanding the marketplace and with the potential change in interest rates that are coming, the decision was made, and what we've decided to do is move forward with a parcel A, RFP, as I mentioned, with the opportunity that if you want parcel A, you could also stipulate that you'd like parcel B. We figured out, and working with our purchasing group, figured out a method which will be able to fairly evaluate those, whether they just wanted to move forward with parcel A or move forward with both. So at that, that's really what the, the next steps are. We wanted to give you that quick snapshot, Mayor, and council members and Borough Board members. But in the meantime, I'm going to return, if you'd go back two slides, please. I'm going to return to the questions before you tonight, but we just wanted to give you that snapshot. So thank you. And at this point, Mayor, that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Romine. We'll start with public comment. If anyone would like to comment on this item, please make your way to the podium and state your name and neighborhood for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes, please.
Good evening again, Mayor, Mayor Protem and Council. John E. Walt, Pinnacle North. What about a non-green option? What is the most cost-effective way to tear this down? It may be one of the options that have already been selected, but we haven't seen that presented. I'm not advocating for throwing it all in the landfill, but we should be looking at all options and, and at least for a cost-benefit analysis. And then for the costs that were presented, the ROM costs, do they include the potential sale of any of the raw materials, the, the steel and concrete and asphalt? If not, why not? And if so, what's the probability that those sales actually occur at the price that we're expected to receive for that? And then I hope that you all follow up with staff's recommendations, because I think that is the best option. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Stacy Belkum. I live in Lafayette, 10 minutes away. I'm a professional special event coordinator. I'm the one who started the Boulder Creek Music and Arts Festival back in 1987. And I stepped in at the last minute to stop that from being demolished at the last minute. And I have an idea that could save this facility and be worth it to everybody to keep it going. I have created my own million-dollar eight-ball pool tournament. It's annual, daily, 50/50, pay-it-forward, and winner takes all. $5,280 slash million-dollar eight-ball pool tournament. It's a, it's a theme for the city of Denver, people of this community, to benefit from doing it. It only costs $52 a day to participate in the pay-it-forward and $52.80 to do the winner takes all. And that's, and I, I've been doing assessment of how many billiards I can get into the facility. And I have a, a layout for 30 tables. And it's a perfect number because there are 3,000 nonprofits that need support. And because I'm a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, I can work with sponsors. I can work with volunteers from charities. I can work with, the entry fees are all tax-exempt, just like booth fees are tax-exempt when artists and musicians participate in my programs. And so I'm not done doing the full analysis because back when this facility was first built, I was offered an opportunity to go and use it. But my, I don't do indoor festivals. Everything is, I, I never use auditoriums for a festival. And one of the problems it had also is that there's no view of the front range on this side and that side of the highway. And my venues, the projects I've worked on doing has a view of the front range and everything. So I turned it down, and I didn't even go to look at it because I just had no use for it. But my billiards, my game plan requires 365 days of people coming in. I would like to be able to get 300 people a day in there. I would like to use 60 of the apartment units that are there because I have to have a place for five people to stay every night. And that's 300 people that I would need 60 units for right now. I could get it going immediately if you were interested. I could get it going immediately if you were interested. There's already 500,000 APA players out there that are qualified to participate, but it's open to the general public too. So the only thing you have to do is know how to play eight ball.
Right, well, your time has expired. Thank you.
Yes, I would like to ask that I be able to get in and look at the facility just to see if I can finish my proposal to you about the value of it.
You can talk to one of our staff members offline.
Okay.
This is just public comment, so you'd have to contact somebody in economic development.
Because I can't really finish the plan without seeing it.
Right, exactly. So yeah, get in touch with somebody in the back.
I'm only sorry that I didn't know it was closed.
Oh, yes, it's dark. Thank you. Next.
I just had some questions about the demo of the facility. And maybe I misunderstood what was being said, or I didn't hear it clearly. The cost for the demo is not being charged by the Boulder Steel is not having to pay for the demo cost. He's just getting the materials for recycle. Did I misunderstand that?
It's not a question and answer section. It is public comment.
Well, my question is, I'd like to find out if the steel is just being given to Boulder Steel. Because in my experience, when there is demolition involved in a project, the company that receives or buys that material, they actually pay for it. They don't, it is not donated to them. So if we're losing revenue on materials, concrete, any of it, you can, you can sell that kind of stuff. And steel is very expensive. And I would also be wary of any steel company that wants to reuse steel that's already been put up on a job because you have a lot of testing and analysis to be performed. And people might be wary of receiving that on their projects.
So we'll get that addressed. Thank you, Ms. Sun. Next.
Hi, Bill Brothers, Northmore, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Council and Staff. I just have one thing. I think you said there was four potential people looking at this right now. I hope the council remembers that one of their main goals was to get somebody in there that's going to generate cash for the city of Broomfield. Please.
Thank you. Couldn't agree more. Anyone else like to be heard on this topic? All right, we will go to council questions. I'm going to go first. Ms. Allen, would you like to talk about the steel?
Sure, I think I was misunderstood. I didn't talk about a company called Boulder Steel. We were talking about the city of Boulder's project, Boulder Community Hospital and what they did with their steel during demolition.
That's what I thought.
Our recommended option would demolish the building, separate the steel and get it recycled, and we would receive the scrap value for that, which I think was part of Mr. Ewald's question. So the costs do include revenue from the materials that are being recycled.
So that's kind of deducted from the cost in advance or it's kind of factored into the price?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Allen. I'll go to my council colleagues now. Councilmember Delgado.
Thank you, Mayor. So you, I guess you already handled my first one, which I did. I would like to say I did independently write aside from Mr. Ewald's question as well. But so the cost that you have, that is including what we would recover from the auction of assets as well as the sale of recycled steel?
It does not include the proceeds from the auction. Those will become separately from the the net proceeds from the auction will be cut as a check to Broomfield. So that is not in the contractor's cost estimates. And the furniture that we've been selling to City and County of Broomfield is also coming as separate proceeds. Those are not, I don't have those numbers.
Okay, yeah, that was going to be my other question is if we have an estimate as to what that would look like. Obviously, all estimates are going to be a little off. They're going to be a little wrong always. But it would be kind of nice to see essentially the all-in price of everything and what we would expect to get back. But
I think we're on the order of less than a quarter million dollars when it comes to the auctioning of the items.
Great.
Just to give you a sense.
Okay, so that's very helpful just to have that ballpark because then that doesn't really move the needle on the ordering of cost. It's just helpful to know. So thank you for that. And then generally, I know we don't have a contract in front of us or anything like that. But generally, what does schedule look like for demolition? Are we only doing workdays, business hours? Like, what does that typically look like?
So we're planning on staying within our standard hours, which is Monday through Friday, 7 to 7. I don't know the contractors. Most contractors are not out there 12 hours a day, five days a week. But those are the allowable hours. We allow work on Saturdays with special permission and the contractor doesn't foresee the need to utilize that on a regular basis.
Great, well, that's very helpful to know. I know that I do want to be mindful of the fact that we do have residents over there, obviously. And I know they, I used to live in that area and I certainly agreed to live in a somewhat more urbanized, somewhat more bustling area. But we still, you know, still want to be mindful to them. But those were my two questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Marsh Holson.
Thank you, Mayor. What is the benefit to deconstructing versus demolition? I understand that, I mean, this steel is going to be recycled either way. But what's the benefit to reusing the trusses rather than trapping them and recycling them?
I would suppose carbon footprint, right? So you have to, like a glass bottle, if you buy a bottle of wine and you reuse the glass bottle as a vase, it's less impact than if you recycle it and it gets melted and processed and reincarnated into a different glass object. So that's the same thing with the steel, right? And I think that's why Boulder was hoping to reuse versus recycle as much as they could.
Okay, that makes sense. And we don't have any, you said we don't have any, nobody lined up that would be able to reuse those trusses currently, right?
Right. Correct.
And so it would have to be stored at the site or somewhere?
Somewhere, on our property somewhere.
Would that require building any facility over it, like covering over it? Or would it be tarps? Or how does that work? And what is the cost of that?
Well, we haven't identified a site and who would be responsible for monitoring it and selling it. It could be low cost if we have property that we could just set it on.
Okay, I think that's all, Mayor.
All right, thank you. And next is Councilmember Lim.
The memo linked to the project for the Boulder Hospital is an example. In the Boulder Hospital example, they took some of the asphalt and other materials and crushed them on site and then reused those, the crushed material in the foundation or to form the soil foundation. Is that something that we would be doing?
Yes, yeah, that's what I was trying to say. For all three scenarios, we will do that.
Okay, so we won't be trucking the crushed material offsite. That saves carbon footprint.
Correct. I mean, if we generate so much that grading the site and drainage doesn't quite work and we need to haul some off, we'll do that. But right now, we're not anticipating.
That's not the main plan. Okay.
And can I add one thing to that? Because I think it also answers Mr. Ewald's question. This is the lowest cost because we are keeping stuff on site. We're not selling, driving it to a landfill and paying a landfill. So the green demolition is the absolute lowest cost.
Great, that's good. Thank you for answering that. The other thing that was in the Boulder Hospital example was they had done the demolition in an order which facilitated having a, some kind of barrier next to the residences so that there was like a noise barrier. So they, that, there was a precedence to the way they deconstructed it. Is that, are we preferencing that noise barrier also in our deconstruction? Is there any way to do that?
That's exactly what we're doing because we're working from highway to the west so that that long section along Broomfield Lane is really acting as a noise barrier to the residents as long as possible.
And will that, do we anticipate that that natural barrier of the order of demolition will be sufficient as a noise barrier? Or will it be something else that will be required to make sure that the residents aren't bothered by the, by the noise too much, I guess? And it's kind of inevitable.
You know, the contractor provided noise reports from the Boulder project on all over the perimeter. And the noise readings were looked pretty good. I mean, noise readings are tricky, right? Because you have to, where you're standing and how much exposure, you know, time-wise, not just to volume. They were, they were, you know, way low, any sort of USHA standard or anything like that. So we'll be monitoring noise and making adjustments if necessary. But right, right now, I mean, you know, the Boulder Community Hospital was in a much quieter area, I would say, than this. But we'll have to, we'll have to watch and see. Obviously, I've never worked on a project like this, but all the research I've done is I think we'll be okay.
Okay, great. Thank you. Those are my questions.
Thank you. Would our Borough members like to ask any questions? He's coming up. This is Borough Member Lizla Evans, who represents the Fire Districts in North Metro.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. It's good to see you and my fellow Borough Board member. I wasn't going to comment, but I had a couple of questions for Mr. Romine, because I always do, regarding developer interest in the two parcels. And I believe I understood that Borough owns one parcel and the city owns the other. Can, is it, may I ask, that, can you give the board and council any hint as to the potential sale price or the magnitude we might be looking at that would potentially offset the remaining balance that is owed on the property?
Borough Board Member Law Evans, Mayor, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Councilmembers. So at this point, we don't have a set price determined. We have been trying to understand what that market would be. As we move into the development, RFP, one of the conditions we'll be asking or one of the things we'll be asking them to do is providing us information about what kinds of support, what the price might be and things like that. We have some sense of what the market is. However, we recognize that this is a unique situation and what that's going to look like, we're not quite sure. Our, in talking to City and County Manager Hoffman on repeated, in repeated times about what we're looking for and what we may be thinking about with the RFP, the goal is around long-term financial outcome. And what I mean by that is, is we've talked about it. We're not trying to maximize the sale price of the land, whether this piece of land the Borough owns or the piece of land that CCOB owns, but in fact, generate the highest amount of revenue overturn, over the lifespan of this. So much like we think about other projects, it's not just transactional, it's a value outcome. So if we can see a stronger revenue gain through property tax increase and sales tax increase and the revenues generated from that, we may in fact decide that it makes sense to go with a lower sale price. So that's what the calculation will be and that will be part of what the RFP is. And as we come back to City Council and the Borough for these two items and these particular pieces of property, we will cover those items at that time.
I hope that answered your question, Board Member.
Thank you.
It does answer my question. It wasn't the answer I was expecting because I was expecting you would say, no, I can't give you any hints as to what that number would be. But what an excellent answer. Thank you. Follow-up question, I understood, and this is more for my curiosity, knowing just a little bit of what I know about Arista than anything else. I understood that the potential developers to whom you spoke were more interested in parcel A rather than parcel B. Is that a factor of the location? Because I would have thought, I would have guessed that parcel B not being in the Metro District and thus to a developer not subject to the very high mill levy in Arista would have, would have grabbed somebody's attention. So that's just idle curiosity question there.
Mayor, Mayor, Pro Tem, Councilmembers and Borough Board members. Yes, what we heard from them was is the exposure of the location is so significant. And this is literally, as you think about it, there is nothing else available on US 36 between Denver and Boulder to say of this scale of opportunity with 10-plus acres. Secondly, just as a reference, and it's something that Council and the Borough Board have talked about and you'll continue to talk about as we move forward on these projects. The Metro District is also provide, also provides a 1,200 parked garage facility. And that is part of the Metro District. And so that opportunity for parking and what may be developed on that site and how there may be opportunities of using that parking is also a positive benefit for being in the Metro District. So like everything, there's pluses and minuses. So I hope that answers your question. And that'll be part of our conversations, as you can imagine, as we get into 2025. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Romine.
I always learn so much from him. As I understand it, staff has asked Borough and Council for feedback concerning which option.
Yes, can we please put that slide up so our folks can all see the three options? Even though staff is recommending the green demolition, can we go? Thank you.
So, so, and just my, my sense of it is, if I can give my feedback, is that the green demolition option is by far the most sensible at this point. It's not perfect, but it's the most sensible. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Borough Member Law Evans. And our other URA member, Lori Goldstein, representing our school district of Adams 12, would you like to provide your feedback on the three options? Please come up to the podium. Putting you on the spot.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council and my fellow Borough members. So this is a lot different than curriculum and school buildings and all that kind of stuff.
Land use.
However, yes, I find it very fascinating. And it does make sense to me that the green demolition would be my choice too. So.
Perfect. Thank you so much for your feedback. And I'll go to my colleagues, Councilmember Ward.
Thank you, Mayor. In the spirit of giving feedback, well, I think it would be fantastic to go with the deconstruction option just so we can reuse it. I recognize the limitations that option provides at this current time along with the financial impact that it imposes on the City and County of Broomfield. So I think for me, I will go with the staff recommendation of green demolition. It does allow us to reach that 90% diversion rate while being the shortest amount of inconvenience for residents in that neighborhood. It's six months instead of a year and is the cheapest option.
Thank you. Councilmember Anderson.
I'll echo Councilmember Ward.
Thank you. Love the brevity. Anyone else need to weigh in? Mayor Pro Tem Shaft.
Yeah, I support that same option as Councilmember Ross, Councilmember Anderson and Ward.
Thank you, Councilmember Marsh Holson.
Ditto.
All right. Who else hasn't weighed in? Councilmember Winn, you're good with the staff recommendation. Councilmember Delgado, Lim, Cohen and Henkel, good with green demo. All right, we've got our direction. Thank you all so much. And I'm just so excited for the possibilities of the next version. So we'll now continue with the report section of the agenda. Deputy City and County Manager Burton Zetti, do you have a report this evening? And thank you, Borough Member Sire. You're free to go.
Thank you, Mayor. I do not.
Thank you, Mayor. I do not have anything for you this evening.
All right, thank you. Ms. Rogers?
No, thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you both. Council's consideration of the consent items are next. Two of the consent items are Board of Equalization items. As a reminder, council is now the Board of Equalization. So vote by council on these items is a vote of the BOE. The clerk will read all of the consent items by title, and there'll be one opportunity for public comments and council questions and comments. Will the clerk please read Agenda Items 6A through 6E by title?
6A, approval of minutes from the August 13, 2024 Regular City Council Meeting. 6B, Resolution Number 2024-106-BOE, Denying Certain Abatement Petitions. 6C, Resolution Number 2024-112-BOE, Approving a Corrected Mutual Agreement on Abatement Over $10,000. 6D, Resolution Number 2024-124, Authorizing the Amended and Restated Boulder-Broomfield Regional Home Consortium Intergovernmental Agreement. 6E, Resolution Number 2024-125, Authorizing an Intergovernmental Agreement for Election Services Between the City and County of Broomfield and the Regional Transportation District, RTD.
Thank you very much. We'll now proceed with public comments on these items, starting within person. If anyone would like to be heard on the consent Agenda Items, please come to the podium, state your name and neighborhood for the record, and you know the drill. Don't see any takers, though, and there's absolutely no one online. So does any member of council have any questions or comments on these Agenda Items? Mayor Pro Tem Shaft?
Thank you, Mayor. So I just wanted to comment on 66E. And, you know, I obviously would support going toward an IGA with RTD for their election services, just as we do with many other entities for their election services within our coordinated elections. But on this one right here, you know, this this is really about the sales tax dollars. You know, RTD keeping those sales tax dollars that are collected as opposed to returning those because they are not debrewed. And so, you know, this would go to supporting the 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 system, continuing to build a more sustainable system without those major cuts that would happen if they were to fail on this ballot measure and have to give the additional sales tax revenue back to the to the to the voters. So I I definitely do support this. I I think that, you know, at this point, there was a comment earlier during our public comments about RTD and their services. This would be one of those where we would not not only would we not be able to continue to expand the the system, but we actually wouldn't be able to, you know, add additional services within that system. So, you know, definitely support this. I don't know if my council colleagues would support a resolution to support this ballot measure, but, you know, I think that this is one in which our residents continue to talk about the need for a more sustainable RTD and one in which continues to serve Broomfield.
Thank you very much for putting that out there. I think I I did poll council to see if anybody had any issues with us putting our support behind their ballot measure, and I didn't receive any any opposition. So I think Ms. Hunsey is and Ms. Rogers are going to prepare a resolution for us to declare our support for this ballot measure to help them debrews. Thank you. Any other council member questions or comments? Wonderful. Before asking for a motion, I want to remind everyone that Items 6D and 6E contain intergovernmental agreements which require two third approval of council. Is there a motion by council that consent items 6A through 6E be approved? Councilmember Ward?
So moved.
Mayor Pro Tem Shaft, can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Last call for a discussion. Then council, please cast your vote electronically. Everybody has entered their vote, and the results will be displayed on the screen. That passes unanimously 10 to 0. Thank you all. The first item under Action Items this evening is council's consideration on first reading of a proposed ordinance related to rezoning the George D. Ciaro Municipal Building and Police Building to the Public Facilities District. Council has a copy of the Agenda Memorandum, which I'll ask our staff to summarize.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Lynn Merwin, the Deputy Director for Community Development and Planning Director, will be providing a summary for this item.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor, Pro Tem, Council. The proposal of let's go to go ahead to the next slide, please. The proposal this evening is a Broomfield-initiated application to rezone the property at 17 Deco Drive and a portion of the property at 1 Deco Drive from Planned Unit Development to Broomfield's newly created Public Facilities Zone District. And it's the property where we are tonight. The property includes the parcels containing, sorry, I read that already. The Broomfield Comprehensive Plan designates the property for public and or quasi-public uses, and the application is consistent with this designation. The application does not create any impacts to the long range financial plan, and the use of this property today is for municipal government facilities. And the rezoning would align the current and planned use of the property as public facilities with the uses permitted in this newly created Zone District. The proposed rezoning will not create any nonconforming conditions or uses of the property. And just as a reminder, City Council approved an ordinance establishing the new Public Facilities Zone District in December of last year. This is a district that's intended to provide areas for public facilities and open lands and provides more transparent a more transparent understanding for the public of what is permitted on the property than is afforded through our PUD Zone Districts due to the highly customized nature of Broomfield's PUD properties. The property is surrounded on three sides by Broomfield-owned properties, including open space to the north and the Broomfield Community Center and the Bay Aquatic Park to the east, the and Community Park to the south. To the west is the Broomfield Tennis Club. Next slide, please. The property owner and applicant, as a property owner and applicant, Broomfield had held an in-person neighborhood meeting on May 22 of this year. The Land Use Review Commission considered this application at a public hearing in July and recommended approval of the proposal with no conditions. Tonight is the first reading of the ordinance, and there are no formal public notice requirements for this first meeting. If Ordinance Number 2249 regarding the rezoning is approved on first reading to schedule the second to set schedule the second and second reading and public hearing, then public notice requirements will be met prior to the public hearing and that second reading to follow in October. Next slide, please. So new this evening, we're providing a slide that presents a summary of the review criteria for this zoning application. As a standalone rezoning application, there are no proposed changes to the site, and thus the site-specific conditions do not apply to this proposal. Ordinance Number 2249 sets forth draft findings for council's consideration, including that the proposal is in general conformance with the Broomfield Comprehensive Plan. Proposal is compatible with existing and allowable land uses in the surrounding area. The proposal will not result in substantial impacts to the health, safety and welfare of the residents and landowners in the surrounding area, and the proposal is consistent with the city's overall planning and economic development goals. Next slide, please. There are no key issues identified for this application. And again, Proposed Ordinance Number 2249 would approve the rezoning request on first reading and schedule a public hearing and second reading for consideration on October 1st. So this concludes my presentation, and I would just add that as a Broomfield-initiated application, there is no private developer presentation this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll now proceed with public comments, starting within person. If anyone would like to be heard on this item, please make your way to the podium. Seeing none, we'll go to questions from council next. Any questions from my council colleagues on this item? Pretty cut and dry. All right, so next is council's consideration of Proposed Ordinance Number 2249 on first reading. Will the clerk please read the proposed ordinance by title?
Ordinance Number 2249, rezoning the George D. Ciaro Municipal Building and Police Building. Broomfield City Center filing number 2, Lot 2, and a portion of Lot 1 from Planned Unit Development, PUD, to Public Facilities, PF District, first reading.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Councilmember Ward?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Marsh Holson?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All right, seeing no discussion, we'll move forward to the vote on Ordinance Number 2249. Council, please cast your vote electronically. All council members have on entered their vote, and the results will be displayed on the screen. That passes unanimously. Thank you both very much. The next item under Action Items this evening is a resolution approving the 2024 Raptor Management Plan. Council has a copy of the Agenda Memorandum, which I'll ask our staff to summarize.
Thank you again, Mayor. Ms. Pritz, the Director of Open Space and Trails, will provide the presentation this evening.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council and City and County Staff. I would like to offer a brief introduction before Lexi Brewer, our Open Space and Trails Coordinator, prevents an overview of the plan. First off, I want to thank Pete Dunleavy for his work on this project, Matt Strasser and Rebecca Hannan with Smith Environmental that have helped us as our consultants, the local birders that provided raptor photos for the document, and of course, the Open Space and Trails Advisory Committee. Rebecca Hannan is here tonight from Smith to help with any questions. And Michael McLean, our Open Space and Trails Advisory Committee Chair, is also here tonight. I wanted to add a few clarifications concerning an email that we received from a resident yesterday. And of course, we always appreciate hearing from residents in our community. The funding that the Open Space and Trails Department uses to complete plans, research, trails, and of course, this project comes from the Open Space and Parks Sales and Use Tax. And we utilize the portion of that tax that is devoted to open space. That was approved by the voters in 2001, and we are very thankful for that support. Also, we totally agree with this resident that involving the Broomfield Bird Club and volunteers is really important. So we've written the plan with that in mind. Now I'd like to turn it over to Lexi Brewer, our Open Space and Trails Coordinator, who had a lot to do with this project, to present an overview of the plan to you. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Kristen, for that introduction. And with that, I will dive right in. Next slide, please. So the purpose of tonight's presentation is to request for City Council consideration and final approval of the Raptor Management Plan. Next slide, please. The purpose of the Raptor Management Plan is to really focus on community level efforts to enhance raptor habitat management, as well as to increase raptor research and outreach involving the community. So this plan was really driven by the community. We've heard in all of our plans, our Open Space Park Recreation and Trails Plan, as well as our recently approved Mark Glenwadke Open Space Plans that Broomfield residents love open space and they love wildlife and they want to learn more about it. So this really is driven to help to support those efforts. And then another important note from the get go is that this is really a raptor habitat management plan. Colorado Parks and Wildlife is responsible for managing wildlife. And so this plan focuses on what we can do to promote habitat. Next slide, please. So I will provide a very brief overview of the contents of the plan. There is this draft plan that you can see on our Broomfield Voice page. That's broomfieldvoice.com/raptorplan. And I'm happy to answer any questions, of course, too. So here is an outline, and then I'll briefly go over each one of the sections. Next slide, please. So as Kristen just mentioned about the introduction, and really it dives into the purpose. And then Section 2 is on raptor biology. So we go over why, what are raptors, why are they important, including a couple of values-based reasoning that we dive into. And then the bulk of Section 2 is on these profiles of 21 species specific to Broomfield. So it's important to note, this is not every single bird or every single raptor that you would see in Broomfield, but rather we focused on raptors that we know would utilize the open spaces and the habitat that Broomfield has. You can see an example there on the right. We noted if they were currently nesting in Broomfield, as well as ways that they would use the habitat here. Next slide, please. Another important part of this Section 2 is the Raptor Breeding Guide. So as we want to promote raptors throughout Broomfield, we also want to make sure that we're they're able to reproduce successfully here. So a really important component of their successful reproduction is making sure that they're protected during their breeding season. So the gray highlighted cells is during that nesting season. And then the asterisks there on that chart shows when they would be able to have birds with young. Next slide, please. So as I mentioned already, so the local government, City and County of Broomfield, we have a couple of environmental protections that are already in place specific to raptors. A major component of that is the 20-day letter process where we do look out for nests that would be within a development area. And we have different environmental assessments as well. But there's a lot, a lot of federal and state regulations that help to protect Broomfield or to protect raptors that we made sure to note make note of in the plan. And this would just add on to those types of regulations. Part of the plan also did a interview of surrounding communities to see what type of research or what type of protection measurements that they had. And so most of our surrounding communities had protections really on the individual open space level, so individual management plans. We're really unique in that we're trying to take more of an ecosystem approach of the entirety of Broomfield County. Next slide, please. So Section 4 dives into our public engagement, of which we've had a lot all throughout the the process of this plan. First and foremost, with our events and different presentations, OSTAC, as Michael can attest, heard about the Raptor Management Plan on four different occasions, including approval of it this past June. We also had Talent Talk, a Broomfield Adventure, and we've had two different migratory bird days that talked about the Raptor Management Plan. And at each one of these events, a survey was open, and you can see that directed the residents to the Broomfield Voice page there that I have linked on the bottom. And you can see the results of those surveys in the Appendix A and B. We also coordinated with a lot of regional partners, as I had mentioned. Next slide, please. So Section 5, as I had talked about, the plan really wants to help promote raptors and protect them and make sure that we're establishing really great habitat. Another part of keeping promoting raptors is making sure that we're reducing mortality and injury. So Section 5 really dives into the causes of raptor fatality and injury. And this is based on research that we did with the plan of interviewing rehabilitation facilities all over the country to figure out why the raptors were coming to there. Why were they? Why were they getting injured? And you can see the top 10 reasons there. Next slide, please. Section 6 dives into the priority raptor habitat in Broomfield. So as you can see there on the right, this is Exhibit 4. This is not all of Broomfield County. Instead, we focused on, you know, really Broomfield owned and maintained properties, knowing that this is something that we had the most control over. Other habitat areas are still very valuable, but they're not as easily addressed in this plan. But we do seek to try to get at some of those, and I'll dive into that with some of the recommendations, most notably through education. For each one of these habitat areas, I did talk or we did talk about in the plan, the raptor species that would likely use the area, and then ways that you could promote habitat for those specific species. So knowing that they're around, but maybe they're not nesting, and ways that you can get them to to hang around and nest. Next slide, please. So Section 7 is really the bulk of the plan, and it's the recommendations. And these are divided into three different goals. And you can see on Exhibit 5 within the plan, this is our kind of our action plan or our action steps. And these are divided into kind of near term, midterm and long term priorities or goals there. Next slide, please. So Goal 1, we have engage and educate the community. So I want to highlight that we're really doing a lot of this already. So on the right, you can see our Eyes to the Skies poster. You can see this up at the kiosk at near Tom Frost Pavilion in the Broomfield County Commons. So there's a lot of interpretive signage that already exists throughout the community. And again, this is something that we heard in our OSBRT plan that people really love. They want to see more of this. They want to see more signage. They want to know what's going on in open space. So we're we already have a great basis for that. We also have a couple of different websites where we can post this information. We can continue to work with our partners at the Broomfield Bird Club to create brochures. And we have a lot of really great networks already and volunteers that can help us to, you know, post out this information. Another part of this goal is to promote bird-friendly windows and lighting. And so you all should have received these window clings. And so you can pull those off there on the And so you can pull those off there on the corner. This is a really great way to promote bird safety. So as you noticed, so yeah, you can just pull it off there, and then that clings to your window there. And so window strikes is a cause of raptor injury that we heard from the facility. So you really just want to make sure that any sort of windows that you have in your home, even in your office, that they're kind of broken up, so to prevent window strikes. And we also detail about downward-facing lighting within the appendices, too. Next slide, please. Develop 2, our Goal 2 is to develop a raptor monitoring program. So there on the right, you can see that I was interviewed by Channel 9 News that we already have an Eagle Watch program that we can really base a lot of this off of to use that as a template to launch a larger raptor monitoring program, too. This year was very successful. We had 32 Eagle Watch volunteers. And then, next slide, please. Noting the importance of volunteers, a volunteer actually captured this really incredible footage of our eaglet fledging the nest for the very first time. So you can see the two adults there. And our eaglet taking flight for the very first time this past June. Next slide, please. Our Goal 3 is to enhance and protect raptor habitat. So all of these recommendations should be conducted with reference to the site-specific conditions. So as I mentioned, those are detailed in our Section 6, too. So Rebecca, our biologist, did a really great job of noting what raptors would use which spaces and noting, you know, what could really utilize nesting boxes or hunting perches, an osprey platform wouldn't be useful unless there was a body of water for the osprey to be able to fish there. And then also supporting existing shrub and tree replacement and enhancement programs. So we have a Noxious Weed Coordinator that's doing a lot of that great work. We also have a volunteer program called the Broomfield Open Space Action Network that's helping to do a lot of this really great work, too, that we could continue to lean on and utilize and support. Next slide, please. So the next steps would really just to take those goals and begin implementing. So we kind of broke this into three main priority focus points. So creation and promotion of key education and outreach materials. As I mentioned, we're already doing a lot of that, so just continued to leaning on that support. Pilot Volunteer Nesting Program, utilizing our existing Eagle Watch program. And then third, planning and implementing restoration projects on key properties, really noting that Section 6 to let us know exactly where we might be the most useful. Next slide, please. So the Raptor Management Plan would support the comprehensive plan goal of stewardship plan goal, just careful and responsible management of open spaces and stewardship of natural resources, as well as the council goal of growing greener. Next slide, please. So our financial considerations. As noted earlier, the funding for this project comes from the Open Space Sales and Use Tax, as approved by the voters in 2001, and the project, as you can see, was completed under budget. We anticipate the implementation of the plan to be done with existing staff, of course, with support with our community partners and volunteers as well. Next slide, please. So with that, I request that City Council approve Proposed Resolution Number 2024-101 that adopts the Raptor Management Plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I know this has been in the works for quite a while, so it's exciting to actually have it come to fruition. So thanks to all of you for your work on it. We will take public comments first. If anyone would like to be heard, please come up to the podium, state your name and neighborhood for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes, please.
Roxy Jewell out of Lakemore. Mayor, Mayor Protem, Council staff. Some of the things, I love the raptures. I've grown up with them. They're a very important piece to our world, not just to Broomfield. There's a lot of laws out there that are already with the federal and the state that already tell us what we can and cannot do when it comes to raptures. I like the idea that Broomfield is involved with this. I don't like the idea in the past that they have gone to other locations outside of Broomfield and has helped dictate how things are done. I'd like that to be stopped. But, you know, that's up to you guys on whether you want the department to go ahead and go into other communities and tell them what to do or not, or even voice their opinion, which I don't think they should be doing that either. They have their own area. We don't have a right to go into other areas and tell them what to do on anything, even the raptures. Another thing, I'm not a prairie dog lover. I'm a farm kid. Prairie dogs is not the prime food of all raptures. Now mice is, and rats, and snakes, kitty cats, little dogs. Hate to say it, but that's just the way it is. And you live in the city. These raptures are living in the city. They eat what there is to eat. In Lakemore, the prairie dogs were allowed to come from Boulder County, come into the Lakemore open space area, and that space now is devastated. There is no grass no more. All there is is weeds. The prairie dogs now are moving. They keep moving into the other grass area. They've been in people's backyards. They've actually been in the Lakemore Park. I've been there. I know. That's my territory. So I don't like that part, if you can't control the prairie dogs. And I don't care if you think it's their little community or not. I've been here long enough that those prairie dogs were never that part of that community. And they've destroyed the land. When the wind blows, the dirt blows now. So they haven't helped anything. I'm sorry. The raptures still go after all the other things I mentioned. And they do it daily. I see them up there hanging on the wind, coming up the hill. They're beautiful. And even the little guys are beautiful when they come out. I love the bats at night, too, because they take care of the mosquitoes. So that's what I got to say about this.
Thank you very much.
Hi, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and Council. John E. Walt, Pinnacle North. First of all, thank you to Ms. Pritz for answering the questions in the email, or at least addressing the email. I had a lot of the same questions, and they were asked probably in the email better than I can ask them tonight. So I appreciate that that's partially been addressed. But I think I come from the same perspective as in that email. It seems like that this might be asking more of Council and more of Broomfield than maybe what has been shared so far. It seems like that, yes, it's been discussed that the cost was under budget for this plan, and that it's going to be implemented with without adding new employees. But the question is, I think, that would be really good to have answered, is the obligations that this plan will add to the city, how will those be funded? And will there ever be a need for general funding for anything in this plan? And I think answering that would answer a lot of the questions that came out of that email as well. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this topic? Don't see any online. It is 8 o'clock, so before we go to Council questions and comments, I hope you don't mind if we take our recess for 10 minutes. Thank you. So we'll be back at 8:10. Thank you all. Welcome back, everyone. We're going to continue with Council's review of the proposed approval of the Raptor Plan. We were just starting Council Questions and Comments. So who of my colleagues would like to go first? Is it working? Oh, there we are. Councilmember Lim. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not familiar with what kind of fencing are is conducive or beneficial for raptor habitat. Does wildlife fencing for raptor habitat meet the same criteria for mitigation for wildfires that we're concerned about right now?
Answer that. And just as an example, out of Great Western open space, we did use the Colorado Parks and Wildlife, wildlife-friendly fencing that also has some markings on the top of the fence so that animals can see it a little more easily. But I'll defer to her on specifics, okay?
Yeah, hi, I'm Rebecca. Thank you. The the short answer to that is is yes, there shouldn't. The the main issue with the fencing for raptors and what makes it more raptor friendly is really just eliminating barbed wire fencing as much as possible. Remember, we had that list of what are the causes of raptor injury and mortality? And entanglement was one of those issues. The most cited issue of entanglement was was getting snared in barbed wire. So if you convert that, which again is is friendlier for all wildlife, be it deer, things running under or over fencing. So yeah, if you get rid of that barbed wire, which is conducive to wildfire and things like that.
Okay, thank you. It was mentioned. It was mentioned in the plan that you would recommend with in conjunction with development, you would recommend bird-friendly lighting and that this was potentially controversial for the development community. Could you explain that? I don't. We've had a lot of discussions, obviously, with developers. I don't remember having bringing that into the mix before.
In many cases, we when we do our review of development projects, the Open Space and Trails Department will ask that lighting be downward and have a full cutoff on it. And for example, on our tanks project, we we asked for that, and that was what was already being proposed by our staff, and that's a real positive, especially in a location like that. So that's the type of lighting that we're talking about, where it has the full cutoff. You don't have open light bulbs that are causing a lot of glare.
Okay, those were my questions. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Leslie.
Thank you, Mayor. Just loved your comment about the barbed wire because we just installed barbed wire along Lowell Boulevard to try to keep cars from going over into that what became apparently a party area. But I'm really interested then in the coordination internally. I mean, if that's going to be the process that you're going to be promoting, how are you going to make sure that the whole county and all the various departments abide by that that I wouldn't call it policy, but that practice?
You know, I'll have to check that fence, but I'm pretty sure that's a smooth wire fence and is not barbed wire. So I will double-check that for you and and confirm back through the city manager's office. But I believe it's smooth.
Well, that's good to know. Yeah, I just drive by and see it. Because we talked about it here a couple of weeks ago. And then the second question is, you know, with the reduction of opens, well, not open space, but but land because of development, what will this plan do to, if you will, help the raptors relocate? I remember one of the lots that developer was proposing to build on, I think over 1/20th. There were a number of neighbors that came out and were concerned about the raptor population in that acreage. But I've not really understood yet what is going to be the the plan to help those birds relocate, if you will. I mean, I know, again, open space is one of the solutions, and again, we're hoping to get to 40% at some point. But are there things that you would be doing, I'm thinking particularly baseline development, places like that where there's going to be such a large amount of building and such a loss of habitat for for these birds?
You know, I think when we review projects, first of all, if we can try to save any of the existing trees, that's always a goal that not just our department, but many other departments have. And then the work that we do for habitat enhancement on our own open spaces, some of our tree planting, native vegetation, those types of things can be very helpful. But I mean, that's, you know, it is difficult to encourage animals to go to certain certain areas. And I don't think we can profess we're really going to be able to do that, but to enhance the habitat that we do have is is important.
Okay, and I guess my final question is, I know this is really an educational program. What, how can you include the neighborhoods in this? Because there are owls and other raptors that do live in and among our homes. Not all of them do, of course, but are there things that we as homeowners and lot owners could be doing that might perpetuate their comfort in in abiding among us?
Yeah, absolutely. So we are also, I wanted to highlight, and as you all know, we are a Bird City as well. And so part of Bird City organization is promoting, yeah, friendly backyards for birds. So just a couple of ways that you can do that is to make sure that the bird prey base is healthy. So that's reducing and eliminating pesticide use so that a lot of birds, including, you know, they'll eat insects. You can keep your pets indoors, especially your cats and small dogs. You can plant native plants, which, you know, for fruit-bearing trees can act as food and a variety of different types of plants, different heights of shrubs, different, you know, depths would provide all sorts of different cavities and shelter types for birds. As Kristin mentioned, you can do the downward facing lights or reduce outward outdoor lighting to the extent possible, but especially participating in lights out. So during the important migration season, typically happens in May and October in North America. So keeping your outdoor lights out during that time, your window clinks, which you're all set for. So, you know, reducing any sort of raptor injury to the extent possible and then reducing chances for entrapment and entanglement. So as Rebecca mentioned, the barbed wire fence is part of that. We talk about soccer nets, anything that you have outside that a bird could get trapped in, reduce that or entangled in. So making sure that your chimneys are, you know, nothing's falling into the chimney, things like that. So and we do have this list on our website. So if you go to broomfield.org/wildlife, you can find all sorts of our educational brochures on there. There's a tab for birds that lists all sorts of different information about birds.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Winn.
Thank you, Mayor. Incredible presentation. I learned a lot about raptors. I'm not too familiar with them, so I appreciate you going into the details and, you know, showing your passion for this, you know, proposal. And my question is, how do we measure the success? Will we look into the numbers of bird sightings? Will we look into nesting? Or how do we know that we're doing a good job?
Yeah, so that is a really big reason for our goal, too. And so just on establishing the monitoring program. So a big focus of this plan, as we I mentioned, is habitat use. And so we know that we're being successful if birds are hanging out in Broomfield, which is hard to, you know, always monitor if they're passing through. But if they're successfully reproducing in Broomfield. So the nest monitoring program is going to be really key to getting those numbers and understanding if we're being successful or not.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you very much. Councilmember Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a quick question. As you know, with any policy, one option is always doing nothing. So if we were asked by residents, why bother? Can you hypothesize if we didn't do anything? What effect?
Sure, I can say a lot, too.
Yeah, I would. I would hearken back to Council Councilmember Leslie's point in that, you know, we really are protecting our open spaces, making sure that there's plenty of habitat and trees. And yeah, they're really an essential and important cherished wildlife by a lot of Broomfield residents. So I think that we would really miss out on a lot of those opportunities for Broomfield residents to enjoy wildlife and continue to, you know, have these incredible experiences in open spaces. We have a nature program, volunteer program, where, you know, Broomfield's youngest residents, their preschool age, will go out and and spot birds. So if there are any birds there, they're kind of missing out on that opportunity.
Actually, want to say a little bit about this as well. One section of the plan that we're pretty proud of is the values section. And we talk about really what values raptors provide from scientific and educational to recreational to cultural. We talk about the fact that there's all of these schools in Broomfield that have birds as their mascots. We talk about street names in Broomfield or neighborhoods that have bird names in their in their name. And then we also talk about just intrinsic value, like birds exist because they exist. They are part of the system, whether or not we're a part of this system. So, you know, people are like, you know, do we need to do this? Eh, maybe, maybe not. But also, there's these great values that they do provide, whether you're thinking about them or not.
I was sort of calling back to when I lived on the farm, and we had cats, because if we didn't, we'd have mice.
They do eat.
So I mean, I'm assuming that if we don't have raptors, we have infestations, that they play a role in keeping us mouse-free, that the coyotes can't do at all.
That was in the section. I'm a scientist again. That's in the section on like ecological services or ecosystem services, where they're providing a value to us, again, and you can even monetize that value if you want. You know, what would we have to spend on cats and all of these things to to reap that benefit? So and please no feral cats. That's a different issue.
But it's safe to assume if we don't provide nesting, if we don't provide habitat, they will go elsewhere, which is the typical urban experience, that they they just won't come back. Correct? Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Anderson.
Hi, thank you. I just want to capture a couple of the questions that were asked via email and and also here tonight by residents. So what is what is the cost of this plan? Do we see any of this? It's going to be done over multiple years, I'm assuming. And do we see any of this coming out of the general fund? Or would this all come out of like the open space tax revenue?
So well, our our work really does come from the open space sales and use tax. We don't use the parks portion portion of that tax, just the open space sales and use tax. The staff, the staff, we are paid through the general fund. I just want to make sure that's clear. And the staff does a variety of different things that are beyond the scope of this this project. However, a lot of the things that are in here, public education, website, those types of things, we do that work in conjunction with the communications department, and that will continue. And this will, you know, be a part of that.
Okay, thank you. And then I thought this was kind of a compelling piece that was in one of the emails, to use the the Boy Scouts and their Eagle Scouts, their Eagle Scout requirements after that project. Is that something that you see as a potential way for some of the scouts to get involved and to do some work? Or does that bring liability that we that that wouldn't work out so well?
No, we've done projects already with the the Eagle Scouts or scout troops. For example, at Broomfield County Commons, bird boxes were put up. They put up bat boxes, not really necessarily a raptor issue. But we find that there are a lot of enthusiastic youth that like to do special projects like this that we think are very feasible to include.
So some scouts are interested. They could just reach out to you and and ask for like.
We haven't asked specifically for this project yet, but we have worked with them in the past.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mayor Potam Shaw.
Thank you, Mayor. So a couple of questions. So one of my kind of best examples of working on this master plan with the city and county of Broomfield was when I before I became on council, and I worked on the arts and cultural master plan. And through that process, came to understand that the the goals are lofty and the plan is lofty. And sometimes the only way to implementation of those actions and those goals is through partnerships within the community. Is that similar within this plan that this isn't all on the city and county staff, and it's not on the open space staff to implement this entire plan? But there's a reliance on those partners, and it is a sense of lofty goals and lofty actions?
I mean, we probably wouldn't ask a neighboring community to do work for us in our own community. But I think an example is the Eagles at Sterns Lake. Lexi has worked closely with Boulder County because they also have monitoring volunteers as we do. And we may even seek to try to combine the programs to be a little more efficient about that. But we had a lot of interest in that site, not really to control it or tell Boulder County what to do. But it was it was nearby, and and we do have a conservation easement interest in that property. So it made sense to kind of coordinate and involve our residents, too, in that view. So partnerships are important. We also learn a lot from other communities, too. And the city of Westminster is a good example at Metzger Farm, where a lot of things are done cooperatively there with wildlife and so on. So I think that's really important.
Okay, so so partnerships with other jurisdictions, especially those neighboring jurisdictions, it sounds like, are very important to us, and and that relationship back and forth is important, right? Boulder County wants to work with Broomfield just as much as Broomfield wants to work with Boulder County in terms of those Sterns Lake Eagles. So that makes a lot of sense. But those partnerships that are within our community, it sounds like those are also important as well to for the success of this plan. You had mentioned a couple of those partners with the like the bird, you know, groups within Broomfield. Are there some other, I mean, Councilmember Anderson mentioned like the Boy Scouts. Are there some other ways in which the community partners that may not be kind of high on that list could potentially partner within this plan?
I mean, I think there are probably some youth groups that we could tap into. That's always a good source. And as we develop projects or programs, we will continue to reach out. On our OSTAT committee, we have three youth members. So certainly involving them and getting ideas from them, and they were involved in this planning process. That's important. So we'll continue to do that.
Okay. And lastly, you know, of course, prairie dogs. Prairie dogs are the great debate of Colorado. You know, how are these necessary to the health of the wildlife community and more specifically to those raptors? If you can touch upon that point.
Well, prairie dogs are eaten by raptors. We just had a resident in Lacimora tell us that he has several photos of raptors eating prairie dogs. So that definitely happens. Is that all they eat? No, they eat a variety of things. Prairie dogs are part of the overall ecosystem. They do. I mean, I just think in and of themselves, they're a valuable species. But we are in an urban environment. We are not in a balanced environment. And so management is critical. And that's why we have the city and county of Broomfield policies for conservation and management on prairie dogs. Management does occur. We do believe in private property rights and that people should not have prairie dogs in their backyards or right up against their fences. So that is a it's a balancing act all the time. And the policy was controversial to get approved. I think it took about three years to get it approved through a lot of community discussion. And it is not something that 100% of Broomfield residents say, yes, that's right. It's a very divisive issue. So management, protecting private property, also allowing for the prairie dogs to have space in our open spaces is important in areas where they are not going to be having conflicts on a daily basis with residents. And that's a hard thing to do. We don't have necessarily huge areas of open space, like you may in some other counties. We have more ribbons of open space, and we do have Great Western Open Space Site, which serves as our relocation site, which is helpful.
Definitely. And just just wanted to put out there, just while I have the mic, that that some of those ribbons of open space, there was the 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 hawks that were nesting near Broomfield Heights Middle School. And it seems like that that has become a more of a raptor ecosystem as well. So we now have some some falcons that are in the area as well that are talking on a regular basis. And I keep my eye out for them, you know, in case they decide that they want to turn on the humans again. So I do keep an eye on that.
That was an interesting story.
It was. Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions from council? Comments, feedback? All right, well. All right, well, thank you again for all of your hard work on this. I know when I was first on council in 2017, 18, and I was on the Open Space and Trails Committee, we heard from a lot of residents that wanted us to create this, like similar counties, Boulder County, for example. And one in particular was the late great Skeet. He was probably one of the most knowledgeable bird enthusiasts I've ever met and taught me a lot as well. So, and Skeet's memory too. Thank you all so much for finally getting this done. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next is council's consideration of proposed resolution number 2024-101. Will the clerk please read the proposed resolution by title?
Resolution number 2024-101, approving the 2024 raptor plan.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the resolution? Councilmember Leslie?
I moved the resolution.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Henkel.
Second?
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All right, seeing no discussion, council, please cast your vote electronically. All council members have entered their vote and the results will be displayed on the screen and that passes unanimously. Thanks again, y'all. The final item under action items this evening is council's consideration of a proposed resolution issuing a notice of intent to withdraw from the Rocky Flat Stewardship Council. Council has a copy of the agenda memorandum, which I'll ask our staff to summarize.
Mayor, I'll give a short summary on this matter if you don't mind if I stay at the dais. It's good to see everyone this evening. Nancy Rogers, the city and county attorney. Broomfield has been a part of the Rocky Flat Stewardship Council since February 2006. It is a separate legal entity. Right now it serves at the, as a local stakeholder organization for the Department of Energy. There has been interest and actually action by other members of the Rocky Flat Stewardship Council to withdraw and actually dissolve the council. We are aware to date that North Glen, Golden, Superior, Thornton, it was on their agenda tonight, and I believe it passed, Boulder, in Boulder County have already passed measures to withdraw from the council. There is a provision that says if there's less than six parties, government parties, the IGA establishing the council shall terminate. As we stand right now, there are less than six. So it appears that the council will terminate, notwithstanding the resolution tonight by Broomfield or action by the other members. There's a little bit more information and background on the organization in the staff memo. If there are questions about that, we can pull up specifics on the IGA, but in brevity, I'll conclude that for a staff presentation.
Thank you very much, Ms. Rogers. We'll now proceed with public comments, starting with in person. If anyone would like to be heard on this, please come up to the podium.
Roxy Jewel Alakmar. I was glad to hear that there's less than six now, so it makes it a whole lot simpler. My only question is, because I want nothing to do with Rocky Flats. It's killed enough friends and family. So my question is, is since they're saying something about that it has to continue on until January or February, so does that mean we have to pay our $1,000 again for the next timeframe and then they'll have to give us a discount after that point? Is that correct?
Well, that's the question. We'll find out.
That's too bad.
I'll get you an answer.
Because we wasted enough money being on that committee anyway. But that's just my opinion, but yet I know it's a, the same opinion of a lot of people, not only in Broomfield, but all over, everything up and down the west, the front range of west up here. So I'm just glad, I'm hoping, I'm hoping that you guys vote that we get out. Please, please. Vote that we get out because I know some of the other votes of stuff that have come down, it's been kind of wishy washy and then things come back up and then we end up with another committee and stuff. But if, when it comes to Rocky Flats, I would like to see Broomfield stay out of anything that has to do with Rocky Flats. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else in person like to be heard on this item? Well, we do have one person on the phone, so we're going to go to our caller. It's Randy Stafford. You're on, Randy, and you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Castriata and honorable members of the council. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. It's an honor to speak with you again tonight. You know, I have tremendous gratitude to Broomfield City Council for its responsible governance on health and safety matters related to Rocky Flats. On the, on the particular question of dissolving the Rocky Flat Stewardship Council, I have, I as a concerned citizen have always found it to be a somewhat ineffective body in terms of protecting public health and safety from Rocky Flats contamination. It seems to me that the main function of, of the stewardship council as a local stakeholder organization is to receive reports from the Department of Energy about compliance and related matters. And the, the, the one value that the stewardship council has had for me is having representatives of nine local governments in the same meeting, in the same forum at the same time about this important issue. So I would like to see, if, if the stewardship council is dissolved, I would like to see there be some kind of other mechanism for local municipal governments to receive information from the DOE, ideally in some kind of binding way. And also a mechanism for local governments to formally register complaints or positions with the DOE about Rocky Flats related matters. History has shown that, not just at Rocky Flats, but at sites all over the United States, that the DOE will attempt to conceal information. It will attempt to downplay the significance of information. And there needs to be a mechanism for the DOE to be held to account. But I just wanted to share those thoughts with council and, and, and thank you once again very much for allowing me to comment tonight. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. All right. So I don't see any other public commenters. Let's move on to council questions. Mayor Potem Shaaf.
Thank you, Mayor. So I don't, I don't have any questions, mostly because, you know, I have served on the Rocky Flat Stewardship Council for the last five years now. I have seen the transitions that have taken place as well as I've done the work to understand the history of the site and to where we are today. Last year, in 2023, the conversations really began about what the future of the Rocky Flat Stewardship Council would be. Earlier this year, on January 9th and as well as 23rd, I brought attention to council about the transition conversations to be focused on the future of the organization. On April 24th, I brought forward a completed questionnaire to council that presented a recommendation to the Rocky Flat Stewardship Council of option C, which was to disband the organization. And as, and council as a body concurred with that recommendation. Since then, I have provided monthly updates and even as some, you know, residents might have heard, weekly, you know, a couple of times a month, updates on the progress that, that those conversations have had. With, with that said, Rocky Flats will continue to be an issue for Broomfield and the Front Range communities as well as the state of Colorado and the federal government. What is occurring is a natural transition in the history of Rocky Flats. The discussions have shifted from closure to cleanup, from cleanup to stewardship and stewardship to stability. We have relied on many individuals and organizations that have done this painstaking work to this point. And of course, more work will be, need to be done in the future regarding Rocky Flats. The EPA, of course, the EPA and DOE will continue to adhere to federal laws governing superfund sites, Rocky Flats specifically. CDPHE will continue to be involved in the issues of Rocky Flats and impacted local governments will continue to be involved and in some cases coordinate those efforts around this issue. Broomfield will continue to be, be involved with regard to the adjacent development as we've discussed that before, water quality issues as well as testing and monitoring of the site, which we've continued to do that in, in, in the past. The site will remain with contamination, but the key is to ensure it remains stable and remains on site. I think that, that, that is the place of which Rocky Flats is. Broomfield staff is excellent staff with the, has excellent relationships with the regulatory agencies, including DOE, EPA and CDPHE. They have the expertise and resources to help, to help oversee or to help look at that site monitoring, including the water quality monitoring. And we as a body and we as, as local governments will continue to get those DOE quarterly reports that is occurring and the work that is occurring out there at Rocky Flats. Our staff has been involved for decades, but have also been developing key relationships, which has rendered the Rocky Flat Stewardship Council less helpful in the conversation around these issues. They know the source and they know the people that are involved in those conversations. The next Rocky Flat Stewardship Council meeting will occur September 9th and it will include the next steps and processes that will take place until the early part of 2000 and, or 2025. Most likely January, February, that is going to be how long it kind of takes to dissolve the organizations. There's a lot of processes that have to be done, closing out bank accounts, returning money. The, the question from our public around local dues, I don't know if we're going to have to pay anymore, but the update that we got today was the idea that there is local money still in our bank account and part of that process will be returning that local monies to the jurisdiction. So that will be part of it. So the goal is to spend all of the federal dollars so that there aren't any federal dollars left in the bank account so that we don't have to go through the painstaking hard work to return federal dollars to the federal government. And there are some dollars there that, that we'll be able to pay for the work that needs to be done. As of today, the communities that have withdrawn from the Rocky Flat Stewardship Council are Golden, Superior, Thornton, North Glen and Boulder County. With the five organizations withdrawing, there is now a decrease of the number of parties to fewer than six, as it states in the IGA. And the work will now focus on the termination of the stewardship council and the termination of the organization. That will be the focus of the meeting on September 9th, 2024. I would love to have council support for our withdrawal from the Rocky Flat Stewardship Council.
Thank you. Councilmember Henkel.
Thank you, Mayor. I am thankful for the opportunity to have at least a public discussion of this now. Leading up to tonight, there has been no real public discussion about even withdrawing from this council, which is concerning to me. Usually we have things on a, on a, on a, you know, study session night and so I'll reserve those thoughts here for you all in a second. I also served on Rocky Flat Stewardship Council for many years and met in person. And then also during COVID, it was quite tumultuous. We had people online. There were times where people were yelling and screaming at all the wrong people for all the wrong reasons. And there are a lot of conspiracy theory, you know, people with conspiracy theories at those meetings as well. I will say we have to give the opportunity for public input. If not, we aren't really doing our jobs. I akin this to if we had oil and gas drilling and we told everyone locally, hey, you need to go to the COGCC and not come to your local council. That's not how we operate here in Broomfield. And this oversight committee has disbanded before and then has also reassembled, but it just looked different. So I'm wondering if we can make this look different in the future. And this time it included residents as well. The director turned in his resignation and Golden rightfully so, wanted to remove themselves from the board. Even my own cousin served on staff on this, on this board. But I disagree that we as a body supported this disbanding as it is my understanding that only three people provided their feedback and that does not represent this entire body. I agree with Randy Stafford, has been beneficial to have the information presented publicly and not just sent on an email. And it is important to see and hear other representatives' thoughts. The federal government has an obligation to have stakeholder work implemented and I think everyone needs to know what that requires and we haven't had the discussion yet. The complaints were often because the electeds couldn't do anything about it and that the complaints needed to be towards our federal government. I feel like we owe it to people like Mr. Stafford and others who have had public meetings with regional partners. I've spoken to a Jeffco commissioner and he didn't want to disband and wants to keep the public eye on water quality issues. And it sounds like our VADA as well wants to, to keep the conversation going. And I'm also hearing through Westminster, they want to keep these plans going as well. So I wish we had this information as, as far as a strategic plan. So perhaps in the future, you know, this disbanding is going to happen. It just, it, to me, it was really messy and I'm not really comfortable having this conversation without some sort of study session. But perhaps in the future, you know, we can have a federal representative like Representative Pedersen's staff in one of those meetings and it doesn't have to be what it looks like in the past. So I would like to move to make an amendment to this item.
That would have to wait until we go to discussion. We'd have to have a, a.
Nancy told me differently, sorry.
Am I wrong?
Are we in discussion?
No.
Oh, we're still in questions? Okay.
But nobody's really paying attention to that. It's okay.
You could allow the amendment now because we have sort of.
Well, I allowed the comments instead of the question. But I want to allow other colleagues to have their questions answered if they have them and not, you know, cut them off since this is question time. So does any other questions from my colleagues? Are you just kidding? Oh, Councilmember Ward.
I didn't think it went through and then it popped up and I hit it again and it went away. Ms. Rogers, I know you sent out some information earlier today that I think was in response to Councilmember Henkel's email about the language in, I don't know if it's the House resolution or the Senate resolution that made this a superfund site and directed DOE to have kind of a local government type to set up to disseminate information. With the dissolution now, since our, whether or not we leave is kind of a moot point now, how do you think DOE would go about implementing the requirements set in law by the federal government?
So, thank you for that question, Councilmember Ward. So I'm not going to purport to give what legal advice the DOE might be getting. It was, it was a 2005 National Defense Authorization Act that said the DOE shall establish an LSO, a local stakeholder organization. It, it doesn't talk about how long the LSO needs to be in place or if it needs to be maintained. So arguably, I mean, this is an obligation that's on the DOE, not upon any of the local government entities. I did spend some time on the DOE's website and they had a document from 2014 talking about other stakeholder efforts. Rocky Mountain Stewardship Council was on that list, but then they also had other groups that they were trying to do outreach. So it really is on the Office of Legacy Management on how they're going to do that outreach that they may or may not think that they can, need to continue to do, whether the laws requires them to do it. If you spend time on the Legacy Management website on the Department of Energy, I mean, there, there is information, some of it's a little dated, there's some reports that are a little newer. So there is some efforts to do ongoing outreach, but that's the most that I can comment. I don't know if Mayor Potem Shaaf, Mayor, if you'll allow, if Mayor Potem Shaaf has any information about what Office of Legacy Management is intending to do.
I'll allow it.
Thank you for allowing comments during the question time. You know, I think that that is a conversation that is, that will happen at this point. We had an executive, executive committee meeting earlier today with Rocky Flat Stewardship Council. So some of this was discussed earlier today. There are plans for the executive director of the, of the stewardship council to have meetings with the DOE and EPA to finalize some of those pieces. But because there wasn't a status where there were enough organizations for the termination, he didn't feel that that was necessary to go through some of those pieces, but those conversations will be happening. And like I said, September 9th will really kick off some of those conversations for what we will see. I don't know that. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Ms. Rogers, if council does pass this resolution tonight, when does our withdrawal and subsequently the dissolution of the stewardship council become effective? Is that at the end of this calendar year?
The way the resolution is written, knowing that there was a dissolution effort, the withdrawal would be effective at the point of the organization's dissolution so that Broomfield could be a part of those ongoing discussions, especially as it relates to the assets of the organization and how they
the assets of the organization and how they get returned, and maybe some of those future plans that Mayor Pro Tem was talking about. So if we were the only ones withdrawing, it would have been 30 days. But we wrote the resolution so that it would be effective at the point of dissolution.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you. I just have a couple questions. Okay, so if this group has been ineffective, I completely understand and is already like a done deal, like everybody's pulling out. But what is the option for residents with concerns? Is that something I talked to the mayor pro tem earlier today, and it sounds like this is really something that needs to be handled at the federal level and that we could direct residents to reach out to their congressional representatives, to Representative Pedersen and their senators? Is that is that what staff sees as the place for residents with concerns to go? Like, is there something? Because it sounds like this is not something local for Broomfield, is that, other than the work that staff does on water quality and air quality?
Thank you for that last comment, Councilmember Anderson, because that's what I was thinking. I think it depends on what the concern is relates to. I mean, if we're talking about Westminster's vote on the on the pedestrian bridge, or if we're talking about water quality, I think it all depends. I think general general management of the Rocky Flat site and ongoing cleanup by the Office of Legacy Management, that is probably a federal issue.
Okay, and then I'm not really sure, you know, where we're headed next, but if our VADA, Jeffco, and Westminster, anyone else wants to continue these discussions, it seems logical that perhaps our mayor pro tem could come back to us at the end of these discussions and provide an update on on what the what this process actually ended up looking like and any interest in continuing on with that. Is that is that kind of something we could expect that you would set?
Yes, go ahead, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you. So, yes, so the the kickoff to these conversations will happen in September. The as a member of the executive committee, I was told today that I need to continue to stay on and involved in those conversations up until the beginning of 2025, at which point the the hope is that the organization will be dissolved. There is a timeline that is pretty aggressive to get that done before the end of 2024, but most likely will need into the beginning of 2025. And so putting together a budget for 2025 is going to be a need that we will have to do just to cover those last little pieces. So there are audits, there's bank accounts, and there's other items that have to be taken care of, a website that's out there. And so, yes, of course, I will keep council informed of what has happened, just as I've done for the last, you know, six months or so.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? I have a question because I do serve on the State Board of Health, and I will be on the State Board of Health if nothing changes till 2026. And so when there was a detection of airborne plutonium after the April wind event this year, they actually had proof that there was airborne plutonium. I brought it up to the Board of Health, and then they called a meeting with the state hazardous waste folks and Air Pollution Control Division. So maybe there is a state avenue as well because Mr. Stafford and Dr. Ketterer actually presented their findings to the Board of Health. Would that be an appropriate venue for folks to reach out with health concerns?
I think it would, Mayor. Thank you for sharing that experience.
Happy to help. Okay. So then, no other questions? Next is council's consideration of proposed resolution number 2024-119. Will the clerk please read the proposed resolution by title?
Resolution number 2024-119, approving Broomfield's notice of intent to withdraw from the Rocky Flat Stewardship Council.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the resolution, Mayor Pro Tem Schaff?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Ward.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Councilmember Henkel.
Thank you, Mayor. As you know, as we move forward, and I also served to discuss whether or not we're going to build a highway through that area as well, the Jefferson Parkway, we wanted to, I just wanted to make sure that we owe it to our residents to have some sort of written agreement in 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 our withdrawal because there is no, you know, plan locally, and I just want to control what we can control. We can't always control what happens regionally. I do want to move to amend resolution to add, and I'll read it here. I'll tell you the intent really quickly. It's just so that we can have a place for our residents to have something be made public and publicly discussed. It could happen once a year, maybe twice a year, something like that. But there could be wildlife concerns, there could be fire mitigations, those sorts of things. So while that's a great idea for the CDPHE, we also need to discuss just the land as a whole. So I felt like we owed it to our residents to at least maintain some sort of dedication to government transparency. So I move to, if you want to put that on the screen, Ms. Rogers, and I believe this has to take a super majority to even be heard because it was sent today. But I move to amend resolution number 2024-119 to add to paragraph 2.5 that just requires a study session to be held no later than six months from this vote, that will involve a discussion and explanation of the federal DOE requirements for local stakeholder input, and that will develop a strategic plan to ensure information regarding Rocky Flats and its stewardship is received by Broomfield and then will be made public and publicly discussed by Broomfield representatives in a way that protects the health and safety of our residents.
Thank you. So Councilmember Henkel has presented the amendment on the screen. Is there a second? Councilmember Marsh Holson?
I'll second it.
And then we have to have a seven vote.
To your rules, it needs a two thirds vote for introduction.
Okay, before we can vote on it, we have to approve the introduction because it was last minute. So if you're in favor of presenting this amendment tonight, go ahead and cast your All council members have entered their vote, and the results will be displayed on the screen that does receive the threshold, eight votes to be introduced. So now we'll go back and vote on the amendment. Basically, okay. So now we're voting on Councilmember Henkel's amendment.
Unless there's anybody that wants to discuss the amendment.
Oh, sorry. Discussion? Councilmember Ward.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I appreciate Councilmember Henkel's intent with this proposal. I'm curious why we feel a study session itself is the proper venue for this instead of just having more of a general town hall where we invite those representatives from the state and the federal government and the respective agencies and electeds to have that presentation? So can you kind of walk me through why you feel a study session is necessary versus a different venue?
Yeah, because we represent our residents who are affected by Rocky Flats. So this is where we have public stakeholder work, and it seems like if we don't have a public session where we are doing a study session just based on what we are owing our own residents, we can discuss this as a region, but we also, as you've noticed with these groups disbanning and coming back together, there doesn't seem to be any consistency necessarily other than the fact that those who are concerned want to step up. And so I think it's we owe it to our residents to at least have some sort of Broomfield public feedback representing our residents.
And I and I appreciate that, but I I'm still having a hard time understanding why a study session where we give direction to our staff to do things is the proper venue for residents to come and speak to us about their concerns, where we then have to pass along that information to federal and I'm sure in some instances, state regulatory and elected officials. So I I think for me, I'm not going to be in favor of the amendment, but I do support having some forum or venue that we help facilitate with federal and state partners to ensure that your goal in this amendment is fulfilled, because I do think that is important. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Schaff.
Thank you, Mayor. So throughout this transition process, there have been every meeting that we've had, there has been public that has attended. We have gotten emails as the stewardship council from residents. None of those emails that I've gotten during this transition time have come from any Broomfield residents. I have never gotten a phone call from a Broomfield resident asking to continue to stay with this group. I can't even tell you the last time that there was a Broomfield resident that actually provided public comment to a Rocky Flat Stewardship Council meeting. The the future reports, this has been a discussion for the Rocky Flat Stewardship Council on on how does the DOE and Legacy Management present this information moving forward? As it is right now, they present a quarterly report that is both written as well as verbal to the Rocky Flat Stewardship Council that is publicly available on their website. The discussion has been that because those those reports have continued to be repetitive, there was even the idea to drop those to twice a year, verbal reports, but continuing the written report for four for each quarter, four times a year. And the idea is to still continue to work with DOE, with Legacy Management, and work with certain jurisdictions to be able to have them come and present that that information. A lot of times that verbal information is not in person. It's virtually, it's done virtually anyway. Even when we were in person, most of the time it was done virtually anyway as well. They did not fly out here from Washington DC and present this information in person. Occasionally, we would have one representative from either Legacy Management or DOE. And the the last thing I'll say is is kind of the clarification of of the these organizations that have been discussed about how they've they've been gone. So Rocky Flats Local Impacts Initiative was a group from the early 1990s through 1998. The RFLII, the Rocky Flats Local Impacts Initiative, disbanded in 1999, and it emerged the Rocky Flats Coalition of Local Governments. The Rocky Flat Stewardship Council was created with a post-closure oversight and stewardship organization. This would be officially the first local stakeholder organization and only LSO for a superfund site. The Rocky Flat Stewardship Council does have a lot of that great history. There's actually a 118-page document out there about the history of what that that Rocky Flats Local Impacts Initiative and that coalition. So there's a lot of stuff that's out there available in terms of the history of this. But this, we haven't seen groups that have disbanded and things like this. It has been an evolution. And again, where we are right now is a transition within within the Rocky Flat site and an evolution of this. Thank you, Mayor, for patience.
No worries. Thank you. Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you. I just want to provide a little bit clarification on Councilmember Ward's question about this resolution, this amendment to the resolution. And if I understand Councilmember Henkel's original concerns and discussion we had was this was just an opportunity as a council to discuss what is next. It wouldn't be the time when residents would come and make comments. It's just a time to understand, and I think it's becoming more clear here, that ideally we have some kind of communication, whether it's request for future action or the study session, where we could just understand better exactly what, you know, Councilmember, Mayor Pro Tem can respond back to us, report back to us on on how this disbandment went, if there is any engagement from other communities, and then also a better a time for us to better understand what our staff is already doing, because I think the concern was that we're going to lose all oversight, and it doesn't sound like that. So whether we pass this amendment or whether we just have some kind of future action after the disbandment is over, I think we can accomplish the same thing, just to understand that there is oversight going on in Broomfield by our staff. So I'm, that's all I'll add to that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Winn.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm, this is a hard one for me, just because, you know, I recognize that the Rocky Mountain Flats stewardship is, I mean, either way, we're just talking about the amendment, but you know, I tied this with the amendment because it it sounds like the stewardship council is going to be gone, either decision we make. And so, you know, I agreed with the proposal to advance this amendment just because I wanted to talk about it, and I feel like I'm not sure if using, you know, city resources, city time on this, when we know that this is a changing situation, and in six months, we might even have, hmm, in six months, we might not have the resources or the expertise that could, you know, represent what the Rocky Flat Stewardship Council was. So I'm just kind of, this is a hard decision. I'm not sure where I'm at right now. I think I'm 50/50 at the moment, but I look forward to hearing anyone else's thoughts on this. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Marsh Holson.
Thank you, Mayor. I support the amendment. I have not been involved in the discussions with with this council, with the stewardship council, and I fully acknowledge that there's a lot of details that Mayor Pro Tem Schaff and Councilwoman Henkel are much more involved in in the discussions of it. So I wouldn't propose to to know what we should do necessarily, but I think that having a study session is something that we we could do. It's something that, you know, this is going to dissolve, so let's come back and let's discuss it in six months and say, think, see where we're at. I think anytime we give opportunity for the residents to be involved and to give comment, and I know they don't do that at a study session, but having it on the agenda does give our residents the ability to say, oh, we're doing this, those are those emails we'll discuss. So I think it is important to have the discussion, so I'm going to support this. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Henkel.
Thank you. I'll be brief. I think anytime that we engage any way that we go upward, so we're talking about federal government, if we go upward, we have to know what we need from the grassroots community. Where do we want to engage and how do we want to engage? The only way that we can be informed is if we actually understand the issue. The fact that we're even talking so much about an amendment tells me that we need to have this discussion as far as where are we at as a community and how we want to engage further. It's going to happen regardless, but I think that we need to at least commit to the public that we'll at least have that discussion amongst ourselves in a public format versus moving forward, just talking with the federal government on our own without that that public discussion. So I don't I don't want to have anything, and I'm not saying it's going to be done behind closed doors, but there's already a mistrust of federal government, much less local government, and if we don't have that study session, or at least the verbiage that we will commit to that, it seems pretty simple to me. It's something that we do for for a lot of other things, and I think it's very important to even just do this for the Rocky Flats. Thank you.
Thank you. I need to ask Ms. Rogers a point of clarification. Do we have a staff liaison for the Rocky Flat Stewardship Council?
Previously, it has been the Public Works Director, and because of the water impact, we think the water manager is also involved, but I don't believe recently we've had a staff person attending the meeting, although Deputy City and County Manager Don Davis and Jennifer Hoffman have gone to the Rocky Flats. So it sort of goes back to that question of where do we report the claims? Depending on what the issue is, it might go back to, you know, Kristin Pritz because they're talking about the open space issue, or it might be a water issue or an air quality issue. So staffing is is sort of dependent on about what the topic is.
Right.
But in the past, it used to be David Allen for many years. Yeah. He was our Public Works Director.
So to further clarify, like, who would facilitate this discussion then, other than Mayor Pro Tem Schaff, who's really the subject matter expert, having been the most recent designated?
Thank you, Mayor. If we are directed to have the study session, we will have to work amongst ourselves to determine the best lead. It may come out of the city manager's office, or it may be out of the Public Works Department.
All right, thank you, Ms. Burton Zetti. Thank you, Ms. Rogers. Mayor Pro Tem Schaff.
Thank you, Mayor. So I just have one question. So I get the the idea of involving a conversation with the with the Department of Energy and what that looks like and and having that local stakeholder input. Again, that's similar to what we're doing right now with the Rocky Flat Stewardship Council. The piece that I'm not quite sure about is the developing of a strategic plan. So what does that plan entail? You know, who is going to develop that plan? What's the purpose of developing a strategic plan? So I have questions around that part.
Is your question to the amendment drafter?
That would be great.
All right. Amendment drafter Henkel.
I'm the AD. We do, just to kind of clarify, I think on staff right now, it looks like the placeholder is Jennifer. is Jennifer Hoffman. Has she been attending the meetings? No. Okay. See, this is the part where that kind of scares me. There is no strategic plan, it seems, and we don't have a lot of staff support working towards that. So if we're saying that staff is now gonna be in charge of following this, we already don't have that, it seems. And so I'm really concerned that if we don't have public input, we don't have local staff following this closely enough, things will just fall apart. And so I think that if we can develop some sort of strategic plan, and what that means is that we, you know, develop something to give to our residents to say, hey, here's how we're gonna engage, here's why we're engaging, and here are possible plans and have, and provide feedback. If people want to write in about it, that's great. If we want to involve, I did text Representative Pedersen today, if she wanted to arrive to this meeting, maybe it's once a year, twice a year. All I know is that we have residents that have been involved in the Rocky Flats issues before and perhaps we haven't been asking them locally enough about it. But I do know that we have had past engagement about it, particularly our land that is over in that area. So what we will not be having in the future, for right now, as far as our residents know, is no public input and they've had that in the past. So I think we, we owe it to them to develop, to develop some sort of strategic plan around that. Thanks.
Thank you. And that's not exactly what I heard from staff though, is that we don't really have the mechanism to have this study session. So I think that that's where it's a conundrum because it's, it's voluntary and that, that's not what Ms. Rogers said.
So a strategic plan for us regarding Rocky Flats and its stewardship towards us and our residents, we owe it to our residents to have some sort of staff oversight. I remember having David Allen email us details about what's going on and really give it to us in layman's terms. There was a lot more staff oversight. So we should have had somebody take over David Allen's position and it makes me sad that we don't have that right now.
All right, going on to Councilmember Anderson?
Okay, thank you. I didn't want this to become this complicated. It was just more of a, like a, more of a, a discussion of when this is over, we come back and we have some sort of discussion as a council for the future, not necessarily to specifically develop a strategic plan, but just, I'm okay with the Mayor Pro Tem just reporting back to us on, on, on the conclusion of that and a conversation amongst us at some future time, but with no specific outcome, just to determine if there is something that's going to form or something that we should do. So I am, I'd be okay with that.
All right. Any other session questions because it's all over the place? All right, so now we're gonna vote on Councilmember Henkel's amendment. We have a, do we have a second? We have a second? Okay. And we did discussion, so council members, please cast your vote for the amendment electronically. Couple more. All council members have entered their vote. And that fails, four to six. So now we'll go to, back to the resolution. We're gonna take the vote on resolution number 2024-119. Council, please cast your vote electronically. It comes up. There we go. Couple more. All council members have entered their vote and the results will be displayed on the screen. And that passes eight to two. Thank you all very much for the discussion. There are no requests for future action this evening. Is there any other business to come before the council from my council colleagues or staff? There being no further